Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting this Monday, December the 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the row please?
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Billie Johnson.
Here.
Juan Tao.
Here.
Daniel Daniel.
Here.
Lynn Terry.
Cheers.
Lynn Terry.
Thank you, Ms. Derry.
If you would please rise, we will begin our meeting with a prayer led by Ms. Tanya Taylor, the Chamber Director, and also the Chaplain for the BFW, and then called by our Clerk, Inspector Steve Will Dawson.
We will say, "Father of heaven, dear Lord Jesus, you are our Creator and our Sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. Lord, you move upon men to establish this great nation. You serve men to hope and to dream for a land of freedom. We thank you and we praise you for how you have blessed America and we thank you abundantly for our beloved city here in Greenwood, Arkansas. Lord, in the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, our assembled council, and those who are gathered here this evening, and asking that you would graciously grant wisdom to govern a litigious, conflicting interests and issues, assent of the welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and good for our community, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace and true joy in each of the lives that only comes from you, Lord. I pray for the agenda set before the council today. Please give an assurance of what will please you, Lord, and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Greenwood. And I ask these things in your holy name, Jesus. Amen."
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may continue. At this time, I would ask that the council, if they haven't already, take a look at the, excuse me, Mitch, from our six meeting, as well as the rule of the next.
Thank you very much for the truth, Mitch.
Side.
Have a motion and a second to approve.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Billie Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tao.
Yes.
Ms. Derry.
Yes.
Lynn Terry.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no mayor's mileage report this evening. At this time, we do, in our agenda, we have recognition and acknowledgement. It would seem as though the folks that are here tonight are just to watch council, work their wonders. I think that's correct. Is that fair to say? I think so. We have some very, very special guests this evening, and we are excited why they're here. I know they were excited, and they're still excited, I can still see excitement in their faces, so we're very, very proud of the folks that are here. Everybody that's here tonight that are special guests, and I will step forward to make a recognition. Coach Golden, would you step up? The Coach Golden, not the other Coach. I'm kidding. So proud of you ladies for what you've accomplished, for sure, so, and we thank you for being here this evening, and congratulations to you. This is a proclamation, you don't have to hold my hand the whole time. Being known to all to whom these presents come to the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, by and through the honorable Mayor Doug Kinslow, that has hereby recognized Coach Jennifer Golden and the 2017 Lady Bulldogs volleyball team, whereas Coach Jennifer Golden began her 17th year as head coach for the Greenwood Lady Bulldog volleyball team, having taken her team to the state finals seven times and winning state the first time in 2011, and whereas the Greenwood Lady Bulldogs began the 2017 season, several seniors, seniors, where are you? That's cool. And six starters returning from the last year's 30 and 17, not a bad year, that went undefeated, 12-0 in league play, and whereas the 2017 Greenwood Lady Bulldog volleyball, that's hard to say, the Greenwood Lady Bulldog volleyball team overall record was 32, 7, and 1, and conference record was 14-0. 14-0. Undefeated two years in a row, giving the team the title of 6A West Conference Champions, and whereas for the second time in the past three years, Greenwood played host to the 6A State Volleyball Tournament, giving the Lady Bulldogs home court advantage, which resulted in a trip to the state finals in Hot Springs, and whereas Coach Jennifer Golden and her 2017 Lady Bulldog volleyball team returned home to Greenwood as the 6A State Champions. Yeah. Now, therefore, I, the Kinslow Mayor of the great city of Greenwood, do hereby proclaim December the 5th, 2017, as Coach Jennifer Golden and the 2017 Lady Bulldogs Day. Give it under my hand. (Applause). I will sign this, and so will Cheryl Derry, our City Quarter Treasure, so it's legit, it's all there. Now, there's that. Now, this is a little tricky, and I keep saying I'm going to stop doing it, and Chief Dawson suggests that I do, but this is, this is a key to the city, okay? It doesn't actually open anything. There's been a few tries, I give it out to a couple of folks, and they came back down the next morning, and it doesn't open the city off. But it is a symbol of, I'm so fortunate and blessed to be mayor of such a great city and to be able to represent 10,000 and plus people, we like to believe, and I know those folks are very proud of what you've accomplished, what you ladies have accomplished, so this is a symbol of their gratitude and their respect and their honor, and they're just, they're just awful proud of you. I know, I've got a call from every single one. We're very proud. Now, along with this, this is the part that he doesn't care for, I've always said, and I'll just continue to say, that you now, and typically, we do it to everybody, so there's a lot of folks here tonight, you got a full staff working tonight.
Girls.
Can you just, can you just fill up?
Everybody, everybody gets to speak as fast as you want to through the city of Greenwood until midnight tonight. That's not true. That's not true. Do I, just you? Yes, exactly. But anyway, there's a key to the city. We're so proud and honored that you are here tonight to honor us with your presence, and we're just really, really proud of you. Sorry it took so long, but this art of pride just goes forever and ever with you. We're so proud. Congratulations. We went all the way up.
All the girls, yeah. All the girls up.
And you did okay too, Coach. (Inaudible). We have, I do have an announcement to make, if anybody's getting ready. Anybody who makeup or anything or else good, you look, you look.
Somebody leave, don't be off.
Yeah, we may need the squad. We do. Maybe I should let him do it. We have a challenge, I believe it's already official, isn't it? The police department along with, or just the police, the police department are challenging the ladies for, to a game of volleyball. Do I? Fundraiser?
Maybe we gotta take mine, we're gonna introduce the everybody.
Okay, awesome, we'll let you know. Okay, we'll let the paper know. Ready?
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. All right.
Oh, by the way, you all hit the stage, it'll get her in. (Inaudible). Looking like a Baptist church, everybody in the back. Thank you, ladies, congratulations to all of them. We'll probably have those football guys here next month, too. And if you know, anybody that's in the crowd, those folks that are visiting, anybody, we have championship teams of everything, so we need to know, we honor all of them, those teams, and academia, robotics, whatever that may be, we want to all of those to get in. I do want to say something on a real serious note, too, and I'm going to leave before Ms. Tanya said the prayer for the volleyball, but I'll just mention it now. Roy Holtz, who is volunteer fire department, Greenwood Fire Department, has a son that is in critical condition, I'm sending him to Arkansas Children's Hospital, but they really don't know what's going on.
I don't think he's, I don't think he's critical right now, he just has a lot of seizures.
Okay. So, there'll be maybe some thumb readings for him coming up, or something, or to the opportunity, if you want to get more information on him, you give it to St. Ryan back here, but he's, he's a, again, a local firefighter that has a son, infant son, that's down children, so we need to remember, have a prayer. I have two other, we have a lot of visitors here tonight, we appreciate you being here, but I have two special guests also I want to recognize. I get to, as mayor, I get to swear in police officers, which is quite an honor for me to get to do, and two of those gentlemen are here this evening, I believe one's better half, which is always good to see. I'd like to introduce these two gentlemen to you. This is Daniel Haddock, and Daniel is a Southside graduate, we won't hold that against you, married with newborn, worked two years at Spatshee County, and two years of enforcement at PD, and your lovely wife is here this evening, what's?
I'm Jessica.
Jessica, very nice to meet you, and so proud of you, and glad that you're part of the Greenwood BD.
Thank you, Lord.
Next, we have Mr. Gene Short. Mr. Gene Short is 16 years of law enforcement, Arkansas Highway Police, and Air Marshals, 16 years in the military, he's a Navy vet, married 25 years, with two adult children, all that's good, and then we get down to the bottom, and it says he's an Alamo resident, so I don't know.
I'm proud to change that.
We're working on that.
It's for sale.
Thanks, so, so welcome to you, officer, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll break with the Alamo males.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for sure. I think we're through with that, we'll go right into the committee reports, Spatshee County Boys' Girls Club, they came in Sunday's.
Everything's going great out there, we actually saw basketball this Thursday night, our actual program is booming, we're getting, our box is ready, we're gonna send probably about 45 to 50 kids, put them home from the club and everything for the, for the Christmas holidays. We're about 40 toys short to be able to give all the kids a toy for Christmas, we're hopefully have that done by this weekend, so, you know, y'all all invited to, on the 19th, we're gonna have a Christmas party out there and give the kids Christmas presents. Really quick, I want to tell y'all Merry Christmas, and have a safe new year. We start basketball, so it's gonna be hard, I'll have my reports written and sent to y'all in January, in February. Again, the only, one of the biggest reasons we're out there and operating is because of the help that we give for y'all, and we, we just can't say enough. So, I want to take you more, if I get any questions.
When you say you're 40 short on the toys, what, is that something we can help with? I mean, is there a place?
We're short, if you have any toys that you just want to buy, we're short on boy toys. We have, we have girl toys.
You mean like Lance has, the big side by side, those kind of boy toys?
We had, we, we let the, we have a Christmas pageant out there every year that they run, we get half of the toys, and then the other half of the toys goes to the foster cares to make sure that they get toys also. So, and of course, when you do that, you get a lot of girl toys and everything.
So, if somebody wants to donate their toys?
If they want to donate, straight bring the toy out, you know, just a little $5 toy. We've already had the kids that might need a few extra, that we'll be sending home with them, with their parents for Christmas, and we just want to make sure all of them have a big Christmas. Again, we got 25 foster kids out there, and those foster parents are great, and they're strapped, so we do as much as we can for them.
Thanks, sir, appreciate you, thanks for what you do up there. Number two is SRCA, Lisa Moore, I don't think is here, but I knew, I know we have a written report in your faculty board, so if you have any questions, turn and direct those to my office, and we'll get those back to Lisa. Number three is Parks Commission, I know Miss Bell's here, if anybody has any questions, there's a report, I believe, from Richard in there also, if I have anything to add.
I was reading a report, I gotta know about circus.
I want to know about the gender reveal.
I got no other circus.
I don't have the detail, you know.
I mean, I know it's a bigger space, circus.
We had a group out of Sarasota, Florida, that came up and had called earlier in the year, want to use our facility for a circus, we were concerned by elephants and grass, and then people hanging from the beams, they assured us they weren't gonna do that. Basically, I think dogs, just small domestic animal circus, they did, we had photos, they set up, came inside, set up a beautiful, big round circus, I forget what it was.
Like a big top.
Like big rain, like, like big top on the floor, had chairs, water, and stuff, didn't have great turnout, it was a weeknight, so a lot of people turned out, cleaned up the facility perfect, could no sign of them being there at all. What's that? Well, the service got rid of them.
That was the other thing I hadn't understood.
Nowadays, I guess they have gender reveal parties.
Or, or.
Oh!
I was going with different direction.
(Laughter). That's all it was.
I got you, I got you. It's a boy.
Thank you, thank you, it was a girl, actually.
And what, you must say, do you believe Parks Department is starting in January?
Parks Department, yeah, this will be my last time coming for you guys, Parks Director starting January 1st, Nathan Neighbors will be brought, he'll be coming up, he's been in Hot Springs for about 10 years, has worked his way up through the Parks Department down there in Hot Springs, seems to be an early 40ish guy, young, he's been around with his family, has been here, there were about 15 candidates all together, came in to fight for John, and then there was M5, and then down to 3, and then Nathan. He's here right now.
I'll say, I'll act the good spot around the booth.
We're gonna try to do the three dimensional next year, and just put on all of that, just kind of last minute.
Before you sit down, Richard, I didn't plan on doing anything, because I know you don't like it, you're hoopla, so I'll be a hoopla a little bit. On a very serious note, you're almost as good as the last guy.
Almost.
Almost. But seriously, as Richard had said, this is his last meeting as far as council goes as a Parks Director, and I just want to thank you personally, you have taken the Parks Department to another level, I mean, the Parks Commission, I think, would wholeheartedly agree with that, you've done a wonderful job with everything that you've touched, it all turns to gold, and I mean that seriously, from Memorial Square to, to Trail of Lights, to everything that you've done, you just done great.
Nathan's gonna take it one of the best.
Well, we, we hope he's not, but, but please acknowledge Richard McKinney as a officer.
I really don't have anything unless there's questions, January 15th is the beginning of the fiscal session, state fiscal session, I will walk back after, back to the session, Gary's session.
Thanks, sir. May I see construction progress? I'm a Michael, I didn't see Michael, so I think, oh, is he here? Do you have anything for us?
I don't have a thing to report, I have something in search of.
Okay, okay, make sure. Waterways Water Commission, Steve Rattery is not here tonight, I believe he's ill, I believe, so, if you have any questions regarding those folks, just let us know, and then pass it on to Tammy, through my office, and we'll get those to Mr. Rattery. We are now at the Citizen Forum, and we have three names to sign up this evening, and I would remind anybody that did not know, sign up sheet up, always do this, and just want to make sure, if you wanted to speak tonight, we need your name here, but I would still give you that opportunity to do so, I'll call on you, you can come up to the microphone, and, you know, I would ask that you state your name and your address, just for the record, and you have five minutes to speak on whatever subject you'd like to speak in. First on our list this evening is Mr. Josh Miles.
Thank you for having me. (Inaudible). 1133, where, my name is Josh Miles. On December 5th, 1933, the 21st Amendment was ratified as an announcement, proclamation to President, President D. Roosevelt. The 21st Amendment repealed the 18th Amendment of January 16th, 1919, ending increasingly unpopular nationwide prohibition of alcohol. I would ask you this day, December 5th, 2017, that you would put my right to apply for a private club license back on the agenda. I would ask that you do it tonight, as time is of the essence. Every day that goes by is a moment closer in time that the city of Greenwood has to continue every day costs. If we don't do something to help strengthen the infrastructure of our town, then we'll be faced with taxation on our citizens like the A&amp;P tax already does. Just last year alone, the A&amp;P tax cost the people of Greenwood roughly $130,000. This number seems to increase every year, as 2014, it was a little over $100,000, increasing roughly $10,000 every year, so by 2024, we'll be taking $200,000 from our citizens. The effects are, we will continue to grow at the rate we are with or without the sale of alcohol. The well will begin to dry up, and will lead the city of Greenwood into a bankrupt state if we don't make decisions now to fix this. Why should I, or you, or the people of Greenwood be subject to taxes like this when there is an alternative? From sidewalks to fire trucks, this makes sense, from cracked asphalt on our walking trail to our underfunded boys' clubs, this makes sense. How will the city try to tax the people next? Will they request a property tax increase? I'm not sure about your property taxes, but mine are high enough. At this rate, we'll never see big companies come to this area because of property taxes alone. Allowing alcohol sales within our city in a controlled environment is a thing to do. At my restaurant, we'll have a two-drink max, and I suggest that the city of Greenwood make it ordinance, if possible, for every restaurant to do so. I also would request that my business and every business would have quarterly audit, making sure that they are doing the right thing. Also would request that the A&amp;P tax be audited every quarter as well. I have spoken with most of the restaurants in town, they want this as much as I do. You think they would be here right here with me, but unfortunately, some people think if you even utter the word alcohol in this town, that it would cost them business. I'm here fighting for my 21st Amendment rights to sell alcohol, and I would ask that you agree with our founding fathers and allow me to do so. Will you join me today and say yes to today and say goodbye to yesterday, for the thinking of yesterday will get us left in tomorrow, like town, like Hartford, Arkansas. Hartford once was a thriving community, but no longer is, it is nothing more than a ghost town. As I understand, that some of you are up for reelection or election in another area of politics, know this, you were put in office by the people and for the people, so I would ask that you vote for the people, and don't go on how someone suggested you vote, or how someone voted before you voted. Together we are strong, and divided we are nothing. Come together tonight and vote this in, so we as a people can save our money and not be subject to another taxation. When you invest in me, I will invest in you. Any questions?
Thank you. How much for the council? Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next is Mr. Nugel.
Counsel, I have a good spare. Got a few things to say, I didn't get to say last week, it kind of ran out of time and made it short. I hope I get this right, I just added something to my list of things to address. My pal and myself put the board together to start an A&amp;P commission. A&amp;P commission is an operating job in the city. I've been involved in an A&amp;P commission as councilman, I was there when the first initiated. I've been a beneficiary of A&amp;P monies, with events I owe for kids in this town, and the revenues that come in, maybe ten times higher than what the A&amp;P commission can spend. The A&amp;P commission is top class, without the A&amp;P commission, we would be missing a lot in the city. I was glad to pay my extra $10, $10 or whatever it takes to see this city improve. If I can't do that, I need to move. Now, what I want to talk about, of all people, my daughter gave me a hard hat last month. I told my family, it's been a long time since I bought a drink, I said, about 15 years, so I'm not yet. I said about 1,000 drinks a month, if you sold here in Arkansas or Greenwood, I still hold firm that belief. I said $3 a drink, she told me $6 a drink, okay? If you sold 1,000 drinks a month at $6 a drink, you're talking about $6,000 revenue, $72,000 revenue a year. 10% tax, $7,200 a year of tax. 5% tax, $3,600. I still say, if we need money that bad, we're in trouble. We don't need it, we've got good council, we've got a good mayor, we've got a good Something else that got said that I didn't like, alcohol sales in Greenwood being compared to the entire county of Crawford, the city of Fort Smith, the city of Fort Smith is 800% larger than Greenwood, Crawford County is 610% larger than Greenwood, your next nap was in Orange, just 100% in the county, that's wrong, you don't do that. In the clubs, restaurant on Mars Fourth, or whatever you want to call it, they serve what's called craft beer glass, it's half the fillers up. Well, most beers in grocery store, liquor store, whatever, is 12 ounces a can. That craft beer will hold 2.7 12-ounce beers in that glass. According to research, and I didn't, just get my phone and look up figures, you know me, I can spend a month to do it. Football games people watch last about four hours. According to the research, people will drink four glasses of a craft beer in four hours. That comes up to about 10 and a half beers, 10 beers. That's a lot. I have some to read, I'd like to read to you. This also came on the internet, this something about alcohol absorption. Alcohol absorbed into the bloodstream, bloodstream takes place throughout the gastrointestinal breast, say the word from the top.
I don't do that, I can't.
Gastro.
Breast, gastro.
How about the gut?
Yeah, I like it.
And throughout the gut, when alcohol reaches the bloodstream, it's very quickly distributed throughout the body. Body tissues absorb alcohol at different rates, for example, muscle tissues absorb alcohol more rapidly than fat tissue, and that's a study with Western Virginia University School of Public Health. The alcohol you drink currently is used on a stomach, alcohol doesn't need to be digested, and can pass quickly and neatly into bloodstream, about 20% of the alcohol that enters the stomach is absorbed immediately. We told last week, it'll be a while, and Sunday left, but according to the Center for Disease Control, 20% of it is mutated. After leaving the bloodstream, alcohol travels very quickly to every part of the body. Your brain will do part and body to be affected. The alcohol will blow parts of your brain that control how your body works, affecting your actions and your ability to make decisions and stay in control. At first, you may feel happy and best to give it, but after a few more drinks, you'll probably start to slur to words, get blurred in, due to your participation in alcohol effects. effects you're immune, and can also make you feel down or aggressive.
Mr. Newcomb, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but to be fair to everyone, your five minutes is up, I'm sorry. I'll be back in a minute. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Russ Kason.
Have you guys, a lot of us, you guys know, almost everybody up here, I'm a twenty-three year, a Greenwood businessman, lived in this town for twenty-five years. See a lot of people come and go through this town a lot, like to see this town grow and thrive, like you wouldn't believe. Like to see sidewalks and everything going our way, parks mowed and cleaned up, like to see that real good. What bothers me really a lot is driving through this town, going to a horse that can get a good meal, make you drink. And I'm not saying drinks are cocktails for everybody, there's no doubt about it, it's not. I just feel that if Greenwood were to have a sensible alcohol consumption bill, it would be great for Greenwood. I really do. There's nothing better than a nice cold margarita, the Mexican food, or, you know, my gosh, we have the pizza place, what's better than pizza? I just hate to drive through this town, knowing the money that's leaving this town, not only the alcohol sales, but retail, restaurant business. Love it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. That was all the folks I had sign up this evening. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Again, if you missed the sign up, that's okay, we will acknowledge you, you have five minutes. Nope? Okay. Thank you again for those who spoke this evening. In case we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, it's agenda additions. And we have three votes to ask, I'm not having those, but unfortunately, that's not the case tonight. We have actually six or seven. So with counsel's blessing, I'd like to read these to you and let's be jot these down. Number four would be the police department. I'm sure it verges, you might want, basically capital expenditure and a grant that, fair enough, the budget amendment. Number four. Number five would also be the police department to waive competitive bidding.
I thought you wanted to turn that around.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Right? You said then you'd waive it and then do a resolution.
That's correct. So I would do that.
You got two from the police department budget.
Okay.
Number six would probably be.
Actually, six would be five. Okay, let's do this. Number five would be a resolution to move funds within the police budget. Yes?
Yeah, competitive bidding first, and then you have one that's going to be to offset the cost of, if you approve the competitive thing.
Right.
So.
So the.
Remind us.
Okay. So competitive bidding is first, wait in competitive bidding, okay? Okay?
Number four?
Number five, sorry.
What's four?
Number four is capital expenditure.
That's just standard, that's not really.
Yeah, just grant, put a grant on it, I think it's related to grants. And then number six, number five would be the weighting of competitive bidding, police, number six, police would be a resolution to move funds within their budget. Okay. Number seven is planning department, they rezone it before four twelve Cedar Street. Number eight is also planning department, they same, top four eleven Dogwood, rezone. Number nine is the fire department, moving funds, I'm sorry.
Number seven is.
Plan.
Yeah, I know, but.
Rezone. Four twelve Cedar. Number eight, four eleven Dogwood, rezone. Number nine is the fire department, moving funds within their budget for a partial remodel of it. And number ten would be the adoption of the twenty-eighteen caliber, from the stair. Present from the stair.
Yeah. It's to man personal policies.
Substantial fire.
Sir.
Substantial fire with education training.
That's one.
Is that it?
The second.
Second one?
Seven.
Okay.
She wants one.
That would be number nine. Ten is adoption of the caliber, number eleven is man personal policy. Just a few things, went from a short agenda to a long one. Old business, number one, planning department, here's some more areas, ordinance of vacating utilities, some old subdivision blocks, one, two eleven.
Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Derek, last month, I came forward yet for the approval of vacating an easement located on the east side of the Oak subdivision. You asked for documentation showing that there was a twenty-five easement in the Dawson area. The map there shows the twenty-five easement, and the Dawson was a twenty-five, like a thirty-foot green space, and then another twenty-five easement in the Oak, and the corner in the Oak is the one that we want to vacate.
Should I re-vacate this?
Because it's not being used. We've got, we'll have an easement backed up, an easement with a green space in between.
Still, still unrationale, we've got, the place has been under great years.
We're causing people that are buying in the Oaks to not be able to utilize their property like they would like to use it, and it's just an unnecessary easement. Planning Commission looked at it and realized that there was an easement available on the other side of the green space, and we had asked the developer originally to enlarge the green space in between the two, to give a buffer zone, which they did. And so it was just something, they looked at it, and the planning commission agreed that this was not necessary.
I've got one side of my house, in my life, that there's no utilities, that there's an easement through that. It's not being used, it's haven't been used in twenty years. Why don't we just give back everybody's easement that hadn't been used?
Mr. Powell, we vacate easements all the time, we close alleys, we close streets. This is not an unusual request.
I can have mine back.
Do what?
So I can have mine back.
You can have your easement back, you can, you can buy for it, we can look at it, and the planning commission will make a ruling on it. Like I said, we closed alleys all the time, if you look over on the old Packers Road area, all those alleys that were originally there when the town was laid out are not there anymore. The area's over here behind the post office, between Atlanta and Denver Street, all those alleys are gone.
So if I went to y'all and asked for my easement back, would y'all ask me why?
Sure.
Okay, then I'm asking you why.
I, I think I explained it, the people that have those lots there cannot build the things in their backyard that you would like to build in your yard, like swimming pool or, or a concrete pad for a shop or something like that. But the utility removed to the front, so it's not a utility anymore, it's just a vacant space that is unbuildable.
Sonny, you said that Dawson Valley, the lots in Dawson Valley states, there is an easement.
Yes, a twenty-five foot easement.
So you, you believe you've got adequate.
Sure.
I mean, it just simply was platted that way originally, right?
Yeah.
And it was never used, and so we're vacating.
No, they, you know, they decided to go to the front of these properties and to the rear of the property, so there's a twenty-five foot easement on the front, so each one of those lots basically has fifty foot easement taken out of their property. They didn't know that in the lot.
Do what?
They didn't know that in the lot. Did they? They didn't realize that the front was the easement, because the, the plan shows the rear was the easement.
You know, our, contrary to what Mr. Niles said, we don't make any money off property tax. The school makes a lot of money off property tax. We get, when people move in and they buy a lot, we make it off of that easement with franchise fees. That's franchise fees, sales tax, estate turnback, that's our revenue sources. To give away something that's a, could be a revenue producer in the future, I think is foolish. I have no idea, twenty years ago, I would have had no idea what could happen now, cell phones would be as big as they are, and landlines, now there are people that have landlines anymore. That was a big revenue producer in franchise fees. I have no idea what someone might come to the city and say, hey, I want to run a fiber optic line through this deal, and it's going to be massive, and I want to use your easements, and we'd say, sure, because we want good money.
We have the easement, we have the easement in the front. I mean, it would be.
I just don't understand, I just don't understand the rationale, Sonny, I don't know.
These people out of a hundred and twenty foot deep lot, they've got fifty foot they can't use.
And so do I.
And what's the point, I mean?
I have, I have setbacks and easements on my property, and so does everybody else in town. And there's people that live here for eighty, ninety years, and they've got, and they've got planted easements that's not being used now, but at some point, that could be a revenue producer that we may need. And I see no rationale to, to convey it back to them. If we're going to convey it back to the people in Oaks, let's convey it back to everyone in the city.
Well, it, but Powell, that's not true, because we're not, we're using the utility easement in other parts of the city. This is an unused part of a parcel here that is, that is hindering people from building what they would like to build in their property. Like I said, it's like taking fifty foot from a piece of property instead of twenty-five foot. We, we have closed alleys, I've got a book, and Charlotte's got a book, that thick of alleys and roads that we have changed in the city because things do change.
Sure, we just closed an alley up by, in, by the Sebastian County U.S. It went right through it, and went up to the old train station.
Exactly.
It makes sense, that makes sense. There's no way we could ever produce revenue, they might as well utilize it. It runs right through the center of the property, it's a road easement, there was no utility easements there.
But you're talking about using this, this back part possibility of using this back part to revenue, well, we already have it in the front.
And, and mine do. Mine lots the same way.
You've got, you've got utility easement front and rear?
I've got a utility easement front and rear. Gas in the front, cable TV in the back, and unused easement on the side.
Okay, and this is gas, cable, and everything else in front, and nothing in the back?
Nothing right now. But in the future, that's a revenue producer for us. Possible. I see no reason to convey it back.
Well, we've got, if you look at your map, you'll see the lots there, that we could have people building on those lots and putting swimming pools in, and, and accessory buildings and things like that, that, that you're basically telling them that somewhere in the future we might want to use your twenty-five foot in the back.
Right. And that's the way they bought the lot?
All right.
They knew that going in, when they signed the papers.
No, they thought, they thought the easement was in the back, but, but it wasn't, it was in the front. And so now we, we recognize that it's in the front, they would like to have that back portion.
You don't do closing with Powell Company, all that's in there. You signed the dotted line with Powell Company, all that was in there.
But Powell, all I know is, the request was made, it went through the planning commission, the planning commission approved it, and brought it to you.
Now, I guess what I'm seeing here is that, looks to me like the, the back easement is twenty foot, and the front is, I see, you know, fifteen foot, and then a twenty-five. So is it, is it the actual utility easement is fifteen feet, and then the?
There's a fifteen foot easement in the front, there's a twenty foot in the back, there's a twenty-five foot green space, and then another twenty-five foot easement. Brown.
Okay. And how deep are the lots on the, on the Dawson Valley side?
Uh, they're good sized lots, let me see if I've got, they're more of an estate lot, that's the reason why they asked for the green space, so that there would be a buffer between the two. They are two hundred and twenty feet deep.
Two hundred and twenty feet deep. And so in there, and so out of that two hundred and twenty-five feet, there is a twenty-five foot easement there, and then there's that ten foot green space. So it's like a, basically, really a.
There is deep. This is the.
Dawson Valley.
This is the one that was there. This is a lot off of Houston that goes down in turn, but that's the, the property that's backed up against the other.
With the green space, is it possible to, they're hanging about, first inch of, that you could use a green space for an easement?
It's, it's been, it's part of the city's, part of the green space, I mean, it's, it's dedicated, dedicated green spaces to the city.
So for you to reduce that as.
Green space is not to be used as easement. Definition of green space is just dedicated the way God left it, and left it, the glasses of nature, and just the way God left it. That's green space. Not trenching it out and putting lines in.
I'll go with the planning recommendation, and I'll make a motion, we, practice the ordinance, I'll tie it home. Second. On first read.
I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lex Terry?
Yes.
Uh, Russian passes. And Roger Powell? Do you want me to vacate and plant a utility easement in the Oak subdivision in the city of Greenwood, requiring emergency and for other purposes?
I make a motion, we wait a second to read.
Say.
I have a motion, a second to wait, second to read.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
No.
Lex Terry?
Yes.
Russian passes.
What is the emergency, why, why second to read, why?
Oh, we got people that everyone built.
Built what?
Homes.
Homes on this evening?
Homes on the property? That the, the easement, they're, they're trying to get the easement straightened up before they do purchase the property. We have one, one in process of being built right now that would like to put a pool in.
That, I'm curious.
I'll make a motion, we got the emergency.
Second.
And a second to the ordinance.
Yeah, it is.
And a motion, and a second to the ordinance.
Mr. Brown, second.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lex Terry?
Yes.
Russian carries?
Now, I make a motion, we got the emergency. And I can never.
Say.
I have a motion, a second to enact the emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lex Terry? Russian carries? Okay. You're ready.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Number two, no business, Mr. Powell, ordinance establishing permitting process for alcohol sales.
Okay, I'd like to explain this just a little bit, in case you weren't here for the first read, these guys were. So what we're laying out is a permitting process and taxation in one ordinance for the establishment of private clubs, which would be a restaurant that's in business selling food, has selling authority of food by state law. The state law requires that they come before the city council first. The state law requires that they come before the city council first and get approval by the city to do this. And there's nothing that the city council can do, I know there's Facebook, there's out there, posts, there's nothing the city can do to make Greenwood wet. There's nothing we can do, that is not our role. But, two people have come before and applied for permits and been rejected and turned down. Now, why each individual, Alderman voted to turn them down, that may vary. Uh, in, in my case is definitely because we didn't have any kind of plan in place, we didn't have any kind of permitting process in place, we had no taxation in place. I feel like there are people that, First Baptist Church has been here for a hundred and fifty years, they don't want to see this right across the street when they open their doors, I don't blame them. I respect that. So, I have a copy, for the most part, off of Conway, Arkansas, their permitting process for, uh, mixed drink and beer and wine sales within a, in a restaurant, private club permit. So they have, so the person who applies for a permit has to come before us first to receive it. So all, all I'm doing is putting a plan in place so they know the most likelihood that they would get approved. And what their supplemental privilege license, privileged permit would cost, and they know upfront what the taxation is going to be. So, I just wanted to explain that to y'all. Uh, we've been through the first reading, passed unanimously, uh, now we're on the second reading, it takes a third reading, it takes three readings to become law. So, uh, we're on the second reading right now. Uh, and council, I, I wasn't going to go through it line by line like I did the first reading, but I was going to go through and hit, uh, mistakes that I saw and some other things that I may like to add, if that's okay with y'all.
Can I ask you a question, Rod?
Yes.
Uh, just for clarity for everybody, the, the title of this is an ordinance, uh, establishing permitting process, uh, for selling indispensable controlled beverage within the city of Greenwood by businesses licensed by the state to sell alcoholic beverages. Does that include, I mean, you said something there a little bit, whatever you said, uh? We've, we've generally been talking about a restaurant, liquor by the drink, that type of thing. Does this include a liquor store, any establishment selling alcohol? Does that need to be clarified, what we're talking about?
Well, if you go into, we can get into that Arkansas code three dash nine dash two one four, no, this is, I'm sorry.
Which is my second comment about that, would be, any, anything on the books with the state, whatever the requirements are by the state. And I'm speaking, uh, you know, what we've talked about generally, uh, is a liquor store, that there are specific guidelines and regu- regulations of a liquor store. And where they can be loaded, okay, what they can do. Where state statute would be more limited than what we have put in place, I think we need to say, you know, the, the state statutes will supersede this document. You understand what I'm saying? The, the state code prevails.
That will be what the law is anyway.
Yeah, so I don't know if that needs to be?
I don't think it needs to be in there because that's just.
Yeah, that's what it is, right. But, I don't want to get confused with, you know, the, the Vashgrass is not a restaurant. Mr. Niles is a restaurant, there's a liquor store, those are three different types of, just so we're clear.
Josh Niles has the right to come and apply for the permit.
Right.
But, you know, Eastside, uh, gas station does not, I mean, we, there's nothing we can do that they can sell here. There, there's nothing we can do where if you want to drive around, you're gonna have to drink and beer, that's still illegal. But, someone that's got a restaurant in place would have the right, and, and whether we pass this or not, they still have the right to come before us. Uh, we're just putting a plan in place.
You know, in, in your section six, qualification of applicants, persons to whom a state alcohol permit has been issued are presumed qualified to hold a city alcoholic beverage permit. I mean, I don't have any problem which way we're going here, I just want to be clear.
And you know, there's?
If, if, if the state, yeah, if the state ABC issued the Vashgrass a permit, well, then they qualify.
They qualify, uh, they, they could go up and make an argument that they're selling fifty-three percent food.
Yeah.
And they have a restaurant in place, and, uh, they would be qualified.
And I, and I don't have a problem with that, if that's the way it works.
But, like Mike said, it, it refers to the state law, what we're doing is in addition to state law, we're just doing our supplemental privilege license, the taxation, and whatever else that.
But we feel certain that this document is not pertaining to a liquor store.
It is not.
Or, what about Dollar General sells beer, doesn't it?
Not unless Dollar General opened up a restaurant inside of there.
Unless state law changes.
Unless state law.
If state law changes, then we have to look at this ordinance again. Now, we're addressing, if we had state law standards, that's not a issue.
But, even when I was looking at it, there are, even if the county were to change, say the county took a vote and become wet, and every community inside Sebastian County become wet. We still need this ordinance in place. And the reason you need this ordinance in place is because if you take a community like Morelton, which is in Conway County, it's a wet county and a wet city. They still have people that apply for private clubs, and the reason they do is because they cannot sell alcohol on Sunday if they had, had a liquor store or, uh, you know, gas, I guess, gas station, all that, but if they apply for a private club, they get around all that to where they can sell beer and wine on Sunday. So we still need to put a plan in place. Even if there is an initiative right now to turn the entire county wet, uh, we still need to put it in place. Uh, so I'm going to move on, Daniel, uh?
I, I guess the, well, just a question on that, in that blue light, on page five, where it says private club permits, that kind of establishes that we're really doing with private clubs only in the ordinance.
On section five?
On page five, it's really section eight, at the top of the page, but section seventeen, one of the?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, two, section eighteen. But that was specified as a private club law.
I agree. Rod, can we back up?
Sure.
Let's go through from the beginning. Alright, if y'all will turn over to, uh, page two. Where it says, so, I have something at the end of this, I'm going to go through it, that Mike brought, made me aware of it, but I'll, I'll address it, we'll address it at the end. If you'll go to supplemental privilege permit fee, y'all asked that the fifty dollar for nonprofit be stri- stripped, stripped, stripped from that line?
Yes.
And, uh, so if you strike it, and then, Charlotte actually represented that on section eighteen, eight-three, so that would make those two match. And that's what y'all asked for, as all. So I, I would say strike that line behind fifteen hundred dollars. Okay?
And it ends at fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, yes. Alright, if you go down to section four, uh, and go to A, application for, for a permit required by this section shall be in written, in writing on a form described by the city, shall be accompanied by the required fee and a copy of the applicant's state permit. No city permit will be issued until the applicant has received the state permit. Uh, some people have called me and they've said it's slightly ambiguous, so what I'd like to add is a required fee of fifteen hundred dollars. And behind state permit comma before approaching the city council. That's the intent, but it may not be clear. That will, uh, eliminate a, a lot of frivolous permit applications, taking our time of. If, when Charlotte hands out the ordinance, that you, you know, the fifteen hundred dollars is collected, now if they're rejected, we'll give them their money back.
What was the second thing you said, that I got the required fee of fifteen hundred dollars?
And a copy of the state, applicant's state permit, comma, before approaching the city council.
Correct.
Because each one of these applicants has to come before us.
Right, applicant's state permit.
Tell me. Thank you. Want to move forward? Very busy. Okay. Rod, you, you're basically requiring a pause. Should we clear that, I think, or more?
Yeah.
I mean, just return it, you know what I'm saying?
Return it.
Yeah.
I'll be clearing the stadium there that's refundable.
Yes. Alright, how do y'all want to stay, the city, shall they come?
I think you just, you could just add a new, at the end of that, just begin a new sentence. Refundable, refundable.
Under section four, make a J, or, I'm sorry, a K, it says, if the permit is denied, applicant will be refunded with fifteen hundred dollars in full.
I like that.
You want to say again?
Yeah. Twenty-four B.K.?
Yeah.
So due to a company buying fifteen hundred dollar fee and a copy of applicant's state permit prior to approaching the city council, and also add a K that says the fifteen hundred dollars being refunded in the permit is enough?
Okay, this, y'all getting along? Okay, uh, if you back up from K, go to I. Section four, number I. That's where I had, uh, two thousand feet of school, church, daycare, youth activity organizations, Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, meeting place, Alcoholics, Narcotic Dependency Center without prior approval from city council. Would like to add mental health facility. And that was a request from one of my constituents, Mr. Kimberly Brown. And I think it makes sense. Any comments?
Rod, I'd like to suggest that the mental health or assisted living facility.
I'm just fine with that, I'm going to add that in my notes, just. We're on I.
The place on I.
Again, each establishment has to approach the council. We're just telling them their best chances of being approved. And it does say, without prior approval from city council.
On that section, Rod, I would also like to clarify the two thousand feet, that's going to be a sticky deal.
I agree with you, thank you, I forgot to have that down.
I think, uh, you know, uh, we can either add at the end of that paragraph, uh, measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the property lines, or?
I would put it after the two thousand feet, just to, to get that one, you know?
You could, you could go, no permit will be issued from establishment whose nearest property line is less than two thousand feet, you could put it that way. But, what I want, what I want to be clear about is?
How you made it?
As the crow flies from property line to property line, it's not out the door and around the corner and around the parking lot, you know?
I agree, I think you had to define that or else we're going to have?
Should we say parking lot or say, uh, building?
I think, building, building, the building is what I'm looking at.
Building, building.
That mirrors the state.
Okay. Daniel?
I prefer property.
If you've got twenty acres, I understand what you're getting at.
Wal-Mart is an example, is a very large property. The school property is a large piece of property. It's a long way from the edge of the property to the door, now what door are we talking about, at the school? You know, if you get in, the nearest property line to the nearest property line, it's going to be hard to argue about. If we go back door to side door, oh, you, you know, front door to front.
Close the door to close the door.
Of it around, you know?
I'd say you could still say from building to building as the, the lives, you know, that's still is, you know, nearest corner, the, the nearest corner, or whatever it is, you know, the building.
It's irrelevant of two thousand feet, you don't have a plus foot on anywhere. I might add, if you, uh, the highway ten second one area, that the, uh, economic development has been looking at, you know, doing good things with. Two thousand foot from property line to property line would eliminate that area. In some cases, in most cases, they do it from door to door. Because somebody could have a, a building of a large parcel of land, and again, there's another large parcel of land that could not be separated by a road. But you've got these buildings far off, so they would look at, and I can give you an example, Rodney Parham in, uh, Little Rock, in Chapel Road, there was a church there, shorty small, sort of garbage and trees, but the church on the big piece of property, shorty smalls had that corner. Uh, the thousand foot that they used in Little Rock, uh, from property line to property line would not allow, uh, shorty smalls to build there, but they, they went from door to door, which allowed them to build it. So, that might be something that you would consider, like I said, two thousand feet, our seventy-one corridor would pretty much be blocked off, uh, you know, the area brought from Wal-Mart, again, at seventy-one, uh, ten spur area, all that. Those four corners would be blocked off because of two thousand feet, that's, that's over forty miles, so, just a thought.
Mr. Brown? We could really, this whole desk, even if that, that one line right there, could, that's homeless, could be that one line.
Would you mind jumping to microphone, sir?
You wouldn't have, what would I do?
Thank you.
Does any, if that footage, any go ahead, anyway?
Well, unless, without par, through the council. So we still have the option as a council to make arrangements depending on the presentation.
We're just laying out the most likely scenario to be approved.
We can't, still entertain that comment.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir, would you next take any?
Jeffrey Toll is my name, eight forty country club, Greenwood. Um, I spoke with you last meeting, um, I'm talking to you on behalf of the golf course, not for my personal self, but along the lines of what you're saying, you may, you may or may not want to enact a special set of circumstances. Because if you go just from our club, that's two thousand feet, that's, that's not even going to get you off the golf course. So you may want to go from property line, when it comes to the golf course, you, you may wish to go from property line.
Number one is two thousand feet, right? The tee box, degree?
Exactly, so that's, it, it's not happening, it's happening, well, I'm saying that, because, hold on, the golf course in which alcohol is going to be anywhere on conference.
Think about?
Not just that club thing.
Think about being clubhouse.
It'll only be sold with the clubhouse, though.
Only be sold as slug, that's what it was. Now, also, I would say, if you, you guys have been out at the golf course, you realize that we are going to be two thousand feet from any, even from our property line, we're going to be two thousand feet from these establishments, uh, that Mr. Powell's talking about. So we're going to be able to meet that with no problem. But because of the way you're wanting to write it up, you may, you may or may not want to word that differently when it applies to the golf course, as far as going from door to door. I don't, I don't see how that would work with us, if you want to use the door on our crow shop, it's not going to work.
If we did building to building, that affects y'all in a way, because y'all are so far out there.
Okay.
I mean, it's the difference, that when you talk building versus line, the clubhouse to East Hills, I guess, close to school. Building to building.
It's well over two thousand.
Versus number three tee box to wherever their property line is, or wherever, right, that is. I mean, that's a lot of difference.
It, it, it is.
Either way, I don't think it affects you. Either way, I don't think it affects you.
Okay. Well, again, just, just throwing that out there, because again, I think in more than one way, Vashgrass ought to be viewed differently as well, because of the things that I said last time I was at this podium, that again, we're not talking about retailing alcohol to the public, that's not what we're doing. This would be strictly for members of the golf course. For consumption, right there on the golf course. And it, and it really enables me a way to control what's already happening out there.
Without a restaurant, we're gonna be no good. Because when you go, even if you were to come to us, we'd say, sure, go on to ABC, we got our approval. They're gonna say, where's your restaurant, how much food are you selling, explain it all, and they're not gonna give you a private club license.
Well, I bet the difference was there, because when I spoke with ABC, what they asked me once is if our sole purpose for our business was that of the consumption of alcohol, and I said, no, it's not, we're a golf course, and they understood that. So our sole purpose is the enjoyment of playing golf.
Well, let's get through the third reading, and then you're welcome to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Daniel, it seems to make more sense to me, as we just reflect state, what the state law said, couple other places, building to building, straight line.
You definitely see the building, you know, it's a non-ardent term. What's the state law's footage?
At least you're reflecting that, building to building in a straight line. So we'll add that around to two thousand?
After two thousand, say building to building, huh?
Okay, if you'll move on to.
I have a question.
Oh, I wouldn't ask a question, I'm just, I've been wondering.
Chief, if you'd come up to, um, city main address, where we can go.
My question was, because this just, this came up here, around St. Lucchino, we've got a, we have a church next to it, and just went in, and, and say, overall, any, anywhere in town, somebody decides to come in and apply for a license. Well, the head state, we have a church sitting at the side, and it's not like they apply a license, they could be in like that. What, what are you gonna do, what, what does this do to make, where a person's got equal footing on, on able to buy a huge property?
We're protecting, are any establishments?
I understand that, say out, say out there on seventy one, someone must have put something out there. One of those different facilities, easiest one to put in would be a religious facility, so they can put that in. And then say, hey, no, we can't do that, that's ten thousand feet, because we own this property right here, and it's, I, I'm just asking that.
You're saying, would we turn them down for building a church next to?
Well, what we can do is, what we can do is say, no permit will be issued from establishment, two thousand feet, door to door, uh, then, already established, daycare, church, et cetera.
Okay.
In that way, it comes to me, it's what you're saying, somebody comes and flies, and then somebody goes out the next day and says, hey, we're having a church here now.
When you start doing some two thousand foot circles, I mean, you're, you're limited, very small areas already, and if that could happen.
That brings up an interesting question, what happens if this exists and somebody built a church?
Well, we're, so we're backing up to, uh, and we're putting, you know, building to building.
That's the, uh.
Of an established.
School, if the terminated alcohol sales were first, and you decided to build a church next to it, which renders him in violation.
No, because it says.
He's already got his permit.
We're adding the language of an established.
It's all exist.
Well, it's not there, it's not established.
You can just say established at the time of permanent application.
I'm making everybody kind of.
Understand.
State law, state law says that if it's a, if it's an existing church, that in fact, you, you've gotta follow the rules of the state law of the fifteen hundred feet. But if it's not an existing church, you can't, you can't, you can't come by later and put a, put a church within eight hundred feet or nine hundred feet and say, your license is not.
Doesn't affect the liquor sales.
In fact, that's, that's, not, not what you might do here, nor what you might do here, that you have to first go back to follow the state law.
So on, behind the two thousand, we wanna put building to building of an established at the time of application. Charlie?
Yes, the negative existence of that order.
Building, building of existing.
Yeah, I think existing facilities.
All right, existing.
Existing at the time of application.
What do you wanna say again?
All right, behind two thousand, put building to building of an existing at the time of application. Sir?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, you would be delighted to make.
My name is Chuck Burgess, I live outside town, but I have a business near in town, right across from Mr. Niles' restaurant. My question to you guys is, I've heard several different labels, because I've been in this room, two thousand to you, fifteen here, eight hundred here, now, where do we come up with our numbers there? What is the legitimate number?
We're, we're talking about two thousand.
Okay, but we've heard other people, I don't know where your two thousand came from, is what I'm asking you.
Two thousand, can't remember. My, my putting it forward in this ordinance.
Okay. My question is, what makes that right? Because you look for it?
We don't know the idea, that's what I'm talking about.
This, here's a front here.
That's state.
Here's a number to state law. Fifteen hundred?
We can do more than state law.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
I just wanted to be honest in the vote board.
Yeah, and we, we had some of those, in fairness, we had some of those conversations last time, where that was some of the discussion back and forth was, what is the number? Should it be three thousand, should it be fifteen hundred, two thousand is the number we?
I've heard this number several times, since we've been talking. And what you're saying, there's not gonna be a restaurant in this city, from highway ten seventy one, down here to Vashgrass, that can have a restaurant with alcohol. Not one.
Right. Yes, there are places.
Wait.
I'd have to get a map out, but.
I came out of those the other day, and I wrote.
Give me a moment to speak.
Okay.
And, and I put you speak at the moment, and without prior approval of, of city council. So someone can come and say, I wanna put a restaurant right across from the front doors of First Baptist Church. And you can do that within this ordinance, we can do that, we can allow them to do that. What we're, what we're putting forward is this is the most likely scenario for you to get approved. Every single one of them has to come up before us regardless. This is the most likely scenario, this doesn't say they still cannot come before us.
Okay.
And say, I wanna put it right across from First Baptist Church, and we can say yes. So the figure is a little bit arbitrary.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm questioning, that all I've heard is the number, and it's all stuck in my head, is the number.
We can do in excess of what state law says, and state law on private clubs is zero. They, they can be inside First Baptist Church.
It gives, for people who are looking at establishing business like this, this outlines some parameters. You know, something they can look at, and if they look at this property, it's nineteen hundred ninety five feet from these establishments. I think as a council, we're gonna be more likely to listen to that. I think if they're looking at it, and they, and they see this ordinance, and they say, man, I'm looking at this property, just two hundred feet from a daycare, and this tells them that we're unlikely in that scenario to approve that. Uh, I think, I think it's good for us as a council, if we can set out some guidelines for folks that we can do this in the future. So it's good exercise for us to talk through what we think and what our opinions are. A lot of times, our opinion changes as we go through this dynamic, and we're trying to figure out what we wanna try to say.
Well, that's what I was saying, all, all I know is, I've heard the number two thousand, I've drove down this highway here, I've lived in this city, this area, since nineteen eighty seven. I came here because Greenwood is supposed to have the best jewel of this, this state. They do have. I raised a daughter here in this school, and I raised a son in this school. But I was wondering where the numbers came from. Nothing against you, Mr. Powell, I don't even know you. I just know that I've heard the numbers, this gentleman over here, that gentleman there, and there, and I just wonder where the numbers came from, how do they differ?
Is there a number you prefer?
I don't care, I don't drink. But if this man has a business out here.
You don't care if it's less or more, two thousand feet?
No. All I'm saying.
I'm not sure I understand why you're there.
I'm here because I wanna know what number we want, where do we pick the number?
Two thousand feet is what I presented.
What you presented, okay, I understand that.
That's in ex, in excess of state law, which is zero. Now, Gary Collins has mentioned some others, and there are footages on liquor stores and bars, but in private clubs, it's zero. Now that's what the attorney from ABC told me, Michael here, he said it's, it's zero. And he said, and we left it that way, because the way they've written state law, where they now have to come before the council, he said, we figured by the time they arrive at ABC, this has got the thumbs up from that little community, Greenwood, Arkansas, wherever. And he said, so it's met all your zoning requirements, all that, everything that you wanted, so that's what we're doing, is putting this in place, because we've never had anything in place.
Well, I want to say, all I ask is, I've heard several different numbers, and except for the, this group here has two thousand people.
But you don't actually wish it was three thousand or five hundred?
I think the, the church Christ is across the street where our business is. I don't think anything should be on that side of the street, close to that church. On this side of the street, there's the Jewel Bakery, our sign shop, there's Jam Mart, there's Mr. Niles' business, there's the hair tech place. Who cares who's plus there? The people have to cross the street there.
There are only people that care, Northside Church Christ cares.
That's fine.
Fine.
I'd just like to have a, a consistent number, and I don't want to put two thousand, I think that, that your number is correct.
It's been two thousand ever since I presented to you.
Okay, I haven't been here before, and I, I just wanted to ask the question.
But we have had discussions about that.
I've, I've presented, I've presented the question, and that's what this is about, is, in fairness, that's as a council, until they changed the state law, this wasn't a process for us. Nobody was coming to ask for, ask for, ask for an ordinance to go apply for anything. Uh, we're just trying, in my mind, what we're trying to go through here is go through the process of planning to prepare for, as folks come forward to us, because this isn't the first time, it's not my last time, people come to us with these kind of questions, because if they change the state law, now the ownership from us, the tribe to decide, and we, and we're just kinda going to, I think, that process, trying to be prepared, and, and this, all this conversation is just for generating.
I just, I just want people to think, I consider earlier, a while ago, I came, drove down this highway ten to Greenwood, and I looked where the church was, I tried to, in terms of where two thousand feet was, there's not a place that I can see in Greenwood that you ever rest, represent, provide alcohol. Because that's number.
There's quite a few places. And there's, on the highway, there'd be quite a few places. In the center of town, not so many places, without the council approving, there again, it says in here, it's just the last line, you know, without prior approval from council.
So you're telling me that necessarily it doesn't have to be two thousand feet?
There's room in this ordinance for, for a variance, certainly.
If I wanna know what, something up in my, if I wanna build a restaurant, I don't have to worry about being two thousand feet away from a church.
You gotta come and ask.
You're gonna have to come and ask.
Okay, just one more minute, I appreciate your time.
At the two thousand feet, yeah, you're so, and I think you already know, it's not, this, this is hard for being finished.
Okay.
So the two thousand feet that Mr. Powell initiated is with, is just a number, and I'm not saying just a number, but he, he's done his own work, and that's the number he wants. The council will decide if that's the number to stay. And input from citizens is what, what this is about.
I didn't say I'm very disrespectful at all, but I don't know you, you, you couldn't, I couldn't, but I just wanted to ask a question.
Like I said, the two thousand feet have been arbitrary, uh, is giving you the most likely scenario that you and your business will get approved. You, you, when you look at this, and you pay your fifteen hundred dollar permit fee, you come before the council, and you say, I'm, I'm less than two thousand feet, we have in here where we can approve you. You know.
Well, the, the golf course is a great example. If it, if it came in, and this ordinance is in place, it's well beyond the two thousand feet mark. Unblock, it's not even a discussion for me.
All right, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I, we didn't get your name, or I didn't anyway.
Chuck Burgess.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you just didn't get ripped out. I think Mr. Niles just wanted to speak.
I'll keep it real short.
Okay. I mean, it's always up to the councils that are meeting.
Okay. I'll keep it real short, and we all wanna go. My, my only question is, and I know we're not the state, and we're a town, but how are we letting a church dictate where we put business that, that gives money back to our state? I mean, to me, it's a separation of church and state, I get it, we're not the state, and we're a town, but, but how are we letting the church dictate? I, I believe most of y'all up here probably go to church, and most of y'all up here probably drink a drink, and how, how are we letting the church dictate, it's, I don't understand that.
It's not really, uh, me, the church is the, the citizen that, I mean, you spoke in favor, but there were, uh, a lot of new citizens, you know, last month, that, that spoke, you know, uh, that would, you know, pose, and stuff, so, it wasn't really a church per se, it was the number of citizens that, you know.
But that's a framework of state statute, I mean, that's, that's its basic framework.
If we, if we, if we frame, if we frame our stuff off of their stuff, then I don't think we should, just being personal, I don't think we should dictate where a restaurant is. I know a handful of y'all, and probably a handful of y'all have been in my business, it doesn't represent a board, it, it doesn't. I mean, it's a very nice establishment, I, I've put a ton of money into it, I, I promise you, I have the nicest restaurant in Greenwood. And I wanna continue to put more stuff in Greenwood, but I, I personally don't think, and I understand two thousand feet, I understand how you got the number, why you got the number, why you wanna put it in place. Um, I'm an intellectual thinker also, um, so I get it, um, but that being said, um, I think two thousand feet is excessive, and I think all of y'all are intelligent enough, uh, and you should use your intellect to understand that two thousand feet is, is excessive, thank you for your time.
This may have to do with.
Number B Brown, highway ninety six, Greenwood. I would urge you that we're doing our diligence in being on the forefront of making an ordinance, that I would pick whatever guidelines that you, the citizens really want, and stick with it. I just see a huge problem when you say, we can possibly do nineteen fifty for somebody, and maybe eighteen seventy five for somebody else. I just feel like, whatever number and rules that you pick, it's, if you change it for one, then somebody's gonna come in and go, well, mine was just one foot less, and you're saying no to me. So I think whatever number that you guys decide is what's in the best interest of our community, make that the guideline, or you guys are gonna go insane every other month, trying to go, who are we gonna say yes to, who are we gonna say no to, over a few different feet.
I think no matter what we do, you're, we're gonna have that problem, because every single one of them's gonna come before us. We're just giving them the best, most, the best likelihood of asking.
That's all I think.
If you'll, if you'll just stay there, I've got just a question for you. If we can move on, because you give, you called me, and you talked about advertising.
Talking about signage, I was concerned about.
If you don't mind, I'll explain the way I understood it from you. If y'all mind, uh, well, I was gonna add this to another section. And in my conversation with Ms. Brown, I decided to add a section, if y'all, let's see what you'd say, of advertising alcohol will be limited to the interior of the building only. What Ms. Brown brought up is, driving through town, and a big sign out on the highway saying Greenwood's only alcohol, right here, and a big arrow flashing. Now, we do have sign orders, that's in place, but in order to eliminate, really the wording and what she said, I agree with her, I don't know how much, how much y'all agree. Did I, did I get it?
Well, my hope was not having signs outside, or even in their windows, I know a lot of people, even like Coke or Pepsi products, if you push their products, they'll be in posters, you put in the windows, and I just didn't, and not that that's what you intend, because your windows are beautiful, but I didn't wanna go by and see like a big Coors light, you know, in, in the window as you walk into the building, because kids won't bother you, next to Donuts, y'all, I mean.
My wording is only advertising on the interior of the building only.
Yes, sir.
So if you went to like Mr. Niles' establishment, and just had Coors and Michelob on the inside, and that wouldn't bother you?
Not as much as it would if it was facing the outside, yeah.
How do y'all feel about that?
Can we do that, Mr. Ambie?
Can we do that, Mr. Hamby?
Um, that's a pretty good question.
I don't know if you're violating someone's freedom of speech.
Yeah, it's coming from freedom of speech, and they litigated this, and they kind of keep the sign coming up on them, but they lost forty quarters when they lost. So I think it's gonna be-
I mean, we have the, we have our sign ordinance-
But I like your ideas.
You know, size and numbers, I don't like like some of these gas stations up there.
That's ridiculous.
Fifty of those little plastic signs all crooked all over the post. But I think our sign ordinance is supposed to take care of that.
Not about the size.
It's not about the, yeah, it's not about the size.
So let's say, "Nice try, and we'll leave it out."
If I may, too, just for one second, it's just my two cents worth. I'm like Mrs. Brown, only without prior approval from the city council. I fear for you, this council, or any other council that has to make a decision based on who they are, where they are, and what they're selling. That's scary stuff to me. And that's just my two cents. And I understand your comment that they will, they'll have to come to you, but if you have it, whatever footage is, they're not gonna come to you, if that's all it is. If you don't say-
Then be serious when they come to us.
Well, they can be serious, but there's no, there's no room for any, you know what I'm saying? If you just say, "Two thousand, only two thousand foot," if you said two thousand feet, and you don't say without prior approval from the city council, they should know before they come here, and you may have to remind them.
So would you be happy if we struck the fire order, let the council lower it to a thousand?
I'm not the council, but I would, no, 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 I'm not talking about the footage.
You just strike without approval and just leave it at two thousand, and that's it?
I'm not suggesting the number at all. I'm just saying, I think it's not healthy for you, the council, to be giving approval for anything less than what you're supposed to-
So with that in mind, the next person that comes up from the planning commission wanting a variance, better not come before me.
Well, that's just-
There will not be a variance given anywhere on the tribe. We're gonna sell this boat.
Yeah, that's my two cents. Well, now that-
That's exactly what that's all about. We have setbacks for a reason. And when somebody wants to break that setback or give away much of free space, like we usually do tonight, we give them a variance, and somebody says, "Well, the planning committee just said we're on this route." And most of the people up there always say, "Well, let's do what the commissions always say." The commissions are right for some reason.
I can tell.
The people keep electing us, and for some reason, and we don't get to say anything, because we're just the council, we're not the commissions. So if you're gonna put a dead number in the mud, don't come up here with another variance from the planning commission, long opposite of you, because it's kind of a bit in that, period. And that's just my two cents worth. Well, there's absolutely no difference whatsoever.
I agree a hundred percent. I think they're arguing for variance.
Well, you're in the sugar room. I mean, if I put a lottery, and I buy the Old Jim Museum, put a bar in it, it's all, it's close to everything on this list. But I got money, and you want to do whatever, I want to do it, I'm asking nicely, and whatever. But we're gonna have the Old Jim Bar, right by the courthouse, so you know where it's at.
I thought you said the opposite, I thought you said you don't want that.
I'm saying, we're sitting here talking about not being able to say, "If the council approves it, we can do it." So if we're gonna say two thousand feet, and that's everybody's rule, then there's no more variances coming out of planning department.
Well, it's council's prerogative to cancel, to not approve the variance.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent, trust me. Yeah, I know that. It never, ever-
I just-
It's the same principle, boys.
Well, same principle, but I think, this is just my opinion. Again, I'm the council.
Right.
You guys are, and I understand that. I appreciate it.
Well, that'd be the easiest thing for all of us, if the subdivision regulations, and these ordinances, and everything on our books was black and white.
I agree.
And you don't have to come ask us anything.
Right.
Because we get involved in these conversations all the time, and they're difficult, and makes people mad, and all that. I don't, I agree, Ken's right. You're gonna have people lined up in here, and we're gonna get drunk through the mud.
We do anyway.
That's why we get paid.
That drives me nuts.
So with the changes-
Ken, what's the, do you have a feeling on the two thousand feet, Ken?
It should be what state law is. I don't know why we would change it. Doesn't make any sense to change it out of this premier state law as far as that aspect of the ordinance goes, but it doesn't have to be out of there. Because, I mean, as long as there's, as long as the council can approve around those, as long as that wording's in there, you know, obviously, if you make it five thousand feet, then the council could, you know, whatever. It doesn't matter.
So we'll continue to find on the third reading, so I'd like to make a motion to the state to change as we put this on for the second reading. I bow on it.
Have a motion to second, put on for second reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brownson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
I would welcome passing this.
Second reading.
Yes.
Lake Terry?
Yes.
DeMantes? An ordinance establishing a permitting process and reckless permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within the city of Greenwood by business's license. It's got a statute to sell alcohol and beverages, limiting permit fees, and a city supplemental tax of ten percent of beer wine, or two percent mixed drinks, or animal roasts. If you feel any ordinance is in conflict, establishing penalties for violation of these provisions.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, have one another.
I feel like I may have rushed it. Did anyone else have commentary that they wanted to say before we go on and begin?
Since you asked, I'll try to twiddle say something. Put a pier seed, and seven hundred, and what, right? You know, it always comes up, it's been on Facebook and all, the church, Christians, and all that. That's the standing defense. The church is not imposing its will on any- Our country was founded on godly principles, absolute positivity. We try to run from that, but we were. Our church, the church body, all of us, all denominations, are one of the things that makes Greenwood a special place. You raised your kids here because Greenwood's a great school system. That's part of the reason, is because Greenwood's school system separates itself from all others. It has dress codes, it has all kinds of codes that other places find offensive. Greenwood stands for something just a little bit extra. That's why you want to be here. And I'll get away from that. But you also see another thing here tonight, that becomes a problem. This is away from the ordinance y'all working on. But when you start, you start off with a two beer restaurant, it turns into margarita, it turns into mixture, it turns into full-blown wet, just like you have it anywhere else. And that is something that we need to protect against. Two beers becomes full-blown alcoholic cells in our town. We have stood against that for a long time. I would also just like to suggest to y'all, that, and you may have that, for your own time's sake, is there a restriction for reapplication after denial? Or can they just come to your every meeting, say, "I'm gonna apply on this sign?"
Well, he's, he's asking permission to apply, so as far as I know-
But that's just, what I'm hearing y'all happen to go through.
Right.
Say, you turn it down again, as it was turned down in the last meeting, well, you turn it down again, you write back, "Oh, somebody else," you know, but at least not a reapplication of the previous denial.
Like you said, six months in here, but I'm-
Okay, well, I was thinking, I'm thinking that'd be reasonable for y'all.
I think it will.
There should probably be something in the state law, the one that comes to squirrels Little Rock, put this on the cities. So there should be something in their law that says about the reapply. And I wondered that myself, I didn't know. I committed to check on that.
It is ABC, you have the way to period it down.
We have ABC, though, but as far as just at the local level, I don't know what the donkeys in Little Rock are stating. I'm sure there's something in their law.
Anyone else? Mr. Burgess, I apologize if I singed a little curt. Come on, we, and I can't- This is, this is democracy, and this is the way things work. I think, I appreciate you. I've always believed in open commentary, and the citizens are right to come up and lay it to the city council. So I've never been one to try to nail that, and I do appreciate it, I just apologize if I singed a little curt.
That's why I said you won't, this wasn't the issue, it's one that's with you.
Yep.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a little piece of paper that I kept, I keep up here for a long time. Mr. Powell might be a little chuckle at it, I don't know if you want to, but it says egregious. This whole, this whole topic, if you will, for this council, I think I can, I know for this mayor, is very difficult. One, I mean, I lived here all my life, as many of you have, and so this is just different. This is a different ballgame for us to talk about and try to get input from citizens. So emotions certainly will be at the top of everybody for long, the well, this itself, excuse me. Yes, sir.
If I may, you need, the mayor might not know this, but this used to not happen like this. This is a recent, all of this went into effect, where the guys in Little Rock didn't want to hear people come up here and preach, or the guys don't say their bar is better than the next one. This used to be, go out there, you take your application, you try to gather letters from the mayor, or the council, or the chief of police, or the local bankers, all that, and you have all your little animal ready, you go down there to talk to ABC guys, and you lay it all out there in your case, then the anti-people would get up and complain, and then the five guys are booked. And that was it. It was a one-day process for the whole part. And so for some reason, I have no idea why, I guess they were going hard and daily with a bunch of yahoos, so they decided to put it on for the local governments. Or would they have to go through this process and allow people to even enter the public halls of the state Capitol from here? Now, we could have passed, we did pass this the first night, Mr. Niles applied the first night we passed it. We could have put that on as emergency clause and been right through, and he hadn't gone deal with the jerks in Little Rock. But we didn't do that, because this was such a touchy subject in the town, we decided to go with the pre-readings. And that's fine, I have a problem with that. But just, I'm just saying that to let you know that unfortunately, this has been thrown in the city's lap with all these people here. I have lost any friends. Everybody knows how I stand with this deal. I mean, I've shaken everybody's hand that is against this deal. It has been a lot been one way or the other. But think about it, next time we go to ballot, and people go under free your state rep, they put all this on, we're having fun in Greenwood, it's a good time, love it, I've been here my whole life. But we don't, this headache we didn't need, we didn't have to have. But a bunch of yahoos, squirrels in Little Rock think that this, and it's going on in every town in the state, period. And I've tried to be clean of my name for the guys down there, so. But I just want to let everybody know, I didn't know that that's how this went down. I guess August first, it went into effect, I don't know exactly the date, but it's very recent.
Which is why we're going through the process of this ordinance, because we had no rules, we had no process to deal with this debate. So now we're trying to develop a baseline process that says, "There's the starting point before you come talk it up." Try it wrong.
Yeah, that's all I'm, that is what, for some, we have a new face, I'm sure.
Thank you.
If Lake's laughing, I'll call him.
I'm not a gay here in Little Rock.
John Brenner, I live over by Jackson, I'm Jack in all the way. I'm new to this area, and probably all listen to me, and it's like, "Oh, that's a yink." Which I am. I moved from Western New York with my family down. And bringing a business to, manufacturing jobs, hopefully in the next year, employing. And I, I myself didn't know I moved into a dry town. Now, I enjoy a beer once in a while, I teach my children, and they're too young to even know, but they do understand that alcohol exists, and I'm from Western New York. So I listen to everybody's opinion, I'm a Christian myself, and, you know, it's odd. It's out of my element to hear this conversation about alcohol, because it was readily available. Yes, Sundays, you couldn't buy it. Then it was noon, afternoon on Sunday, then you can buy it. So this is all new to me. Now, I see there's many other problems in Greenwood than alcohol. There's roads, you know, traffic situations, things in my mind is blown, why do we have this? You know, and see, people say, "Oh, well, at least it's not LA." You know, that's traffic. You know, we have good Greenwood. But there's ways around for situations that we have. And, you know, this alcohol situation, I just, I just don't, I don't understand it. And, you know, I think because myself, you know, I drive to Fort Smith, learning my parents' language, I drive to Fort Smith to grab a beer and bring it home. Now, I don't stop at bar and drink, but I enjoy a beer once in a while. And I see the dollars and the people going to Fort Smith. And, you know, people say, "Well, it's just this one establishment with Mr. Niles." It's not really the one, it's the bigger picture we have to think about. Because it's not just one revenue stream, it could be many revenue streams that could contribute to the bottom line. So we gotta stop thinking about the one situation and think about the greater picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, to speak to you, one thing I may have lost over is, in this ordinance, it says the taxation, and I've set it at the state max, beer is ten percent, and mixed drinks is fourteen percent. We had nothing in place. If we would approve Mr. Niles, and he went on, and we never decided, we just weren't gonna put any process in place or taxation in place, we would receive nothing. So this ordinance establishes the taxation of businesses like this. I wouldn't expect any big road improvements off of it.
But we are working on the traffic issue, just-
But a two thousand-foot radius for every business or every restaurant, that would count at everybody on this highway ten. That would, you know, the Mexican food place, pizza places, all of them, that would be done. I know what you're saying, but I'm making a plot.
It's arbitrary, it's arbitrary, two thousand feet's arbitrary, you can come before and apply, even though you're last- You know, it depends on who's there. You're trying to protect who's there now. Where you live, you may not want a salvage yard across from your house.
Well, you're right, or trailer park.
I like salvage yards. I like to go around and see what wrecked cars are in. But I don't want, my job is to protect you, you don't want one across from your house. There's a time and a place for everything.
Appreciate it.
And, you know, when First Baptist Church swings their doors open, or, you know, West Side Baptist Church swings their, or the Methodist Church swings their doors open, they don't want to be looking at one of these places, and I need to protect that. But, you know, we might get a large Catholic church, and they may say, "I don't, it doesn't bother us."
Let's put it in the face.
Then, then, there it goes. So that's why I've left it arbitrary in what I presented, and that's what's passed the first and second reading, where we can say, "Yeah, that's fine, nobody seems to object, and that's fine."
That's hypocritical, though, because there's nothing different between me walking out of First Baptist Church, or the first whatever, and walking and seeing Ardis. It's a restaurant. And I walk out somewhere, I see a restaurant. It's not a bar, and it will be a bar. So that's, to me, that's, that's crazy. I mean, because it's, they're not walking out to see a bar, they're walking out to see a restaurant. So that's insanity at best.
And in an arbitrary number, if I offended you, or Mr. Terry, you know, and you don't like me, therefore, you don't have to approve me, because it's not that variance is off. So, but if somebody that politically was your friend, and you could pass it if it was two hundred feet, not fair, but I think we should follow state law. State law is zero, that makes the council wide open to approve it or not approve it, regardless of, or the process.
And, and, I'm gonna walk out, I'm just a white talker, I'm not bothering you. And I'm not talking about myself, but what's gonna happen here if you pass something like this is, somebody's gonna write a check, go litigate with you, and you're gonna lose, okay? There is nothing that you're putting into that thing that's gonna win in the courthouse, okay? You will lose, and you're gonna cost the city money. That's just factual. That's all we're assuming, you will lose. Why would you want to spend fifty, seventy-five, thirty thousand dollars of the city's money in court? That's what will, I'm not saying I'm doing it, okay? I'm just saying, that's what would happen. Why would you want to do that? Over two thousand feet, over looking at a restaurant. A restaurant, that's what it looks like. It doesn't look like anything different. I don't have a beer on the window, I don't have beer in my sign, it doesn't say Sports Grill and Bar. It says Sports Grill. Why would you want to cost the city money? Why?
You can be student for anything. Whether you win-
Rod, you're, Rod, I've had a few conversations with you. You're an intelligent man, you are smart enough to know, but that whole ordinance, you're trying to, a good attorney, rip that sucker smooth and out.
Well, the ordinance is from Conway, and it's been established for fifteen years. It's a fifteen-year-old ordinance. a 15-year-old ordinance.
The way Conway let us come in, yeah, Conway's letting me there, that's why you have somebody living there with them. You're wrapping up this whole city with restaurants, and I know, you said some people can't fly, and you have the ability to bend the road or whatever, I get it, and Rod, I understand it, but they didn't stop it there, okay? They taxed it, they said, hey, this, you can come in, blah, blah, blah. They didn't stop it, but you're, by saying 2,000 feet, you're wrapping up the whole city, you're smart enough, I'm smart enough, most people in here, I guarantee you're smart enough, you know, there's nowhere in the city of Greenwood, okay, that's not residential, that we can buy coffee on, okay, to put in the restaurants, okay? You were asking, Rod, you yourself are asking, but I couldn't say in 2,000 feet, you were asking somebody like myself, but I'm not saying that, okay, to write a check, and I promise you personally, I can, okay, and Chili's can, and Olive Garden can, you're asking those guys to write a check, and you're asking the city to match that check, and a guy like me will go two, three, four, five, six years with me in court. It's not worth it, brother, it ain't worth it. I have respect for each and every one of you, Rod, I've grown a freaking lot, okay? First day I wouldn't like that, I think we both know that, but I've grown a freaking lot, okay? But let's not cost the city money over something so miniscule, if, if the church, and I love the church, no matter what anybody thinks, okay? If the church was physically walking out their door and had laid their eyes on the bar, I get it. Did you know there's no regulation on if I want to put a porn store up in here? None?
No, extra...
Okay, we'll get this enforcement, there is a little difference, okay? But I'm just saying, there's so much stuff to be done here, okay? Maybe I can just produce it here and not sell it. You said same, there's so much stuff, so let's not say something so small, it costs the city money. It's not about, it's not about walking out seeing a, seeing a bar, it's not a bar, that'd be like, then without walking out to see McDonald's, so let's not put a restaurant anywhere on Highway 10. Let's get smart about this.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Let me, let me get control real quick, 'cause I meant to keep it off.
I'm gonna walk out, 'cause...
Thank you. I just, we just, I started out, I'm trying to keep, make sure everybody comes to the microphone, and I am encouraging you to speak tonight, that's what this is for, this is a city council meeting, again, the council has the right to, to say what they want to say and keep folks from speaking at certain times, but we have to keep it in our this continent, so I certainly need, if you want to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, so we can handle some things, that's a civil matter, we do it with. So is that fair enough? Okay. Anybody else want to speak? I'm assuming council will be okay, if somebody wants to at this point, I'm not trying to shut anybody down, I promise you, I just want to keep it, and it gives my air. Okay? You want me once, more twice? Thank you so much, and so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, okay? Number, number three, on new businesses, police budget resolution to outbid the police force.
What is it?
About your resolution to...
This is the American House.
By the way, this is a root beer. I think Chief thought that was funny.
Basically, back when we auctioned off our eyes about, we were gonna use that money now to trump the state approved, and this is just, who would not want to get an apple? Be able to pay the ultimate trip.
We made $8,000, we delivered $316,000 off the auction.
Eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen, twelve.
You're using it now for the new trucks, but I'd like the motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to second to approve the resolution.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Uh, number four, police capital expenditure, slide frame is what I got.
The waiver.
Pardon?
Yeah, it's ordinance, writing, bidding, and then the resolution. Yeah, it was a $3,500 dollar, right? Yeah, that's good, grant this, yeah, it's good. He's on track.
Thank you.
That is his mayor.
Okay, on this one?
I get confused when there's a lot of missing.
Capital expenditure is a $3,500, you got...
It's a $3,500.
Not, not the way.
This one was the waiver, then comes the one to outbid the waiver, was valued at $7,000. Then there's the third second.
Is your waiver competitive first?
That's your bidding here, or tell me?
That's fine.
This, this, are we not on the $3,500, just increasing capital expenditure?
That is the last one we dropped in there, but that, you can make it, you can make it the next one if you want, that's fine.
Okay.
Is that the one you want?
Yes, please.
$3,500.
That's the one that he said, you're on there, it's important. Mary did it.
Fine, it's independent, it's just to increase capital expenditure.
This is, we, this is the grant money that came in, in April, and we need to move that money into capital expenditures. It was for cameras, additional cameras that evolved into police officer wear.
I was talking about a Ford Explorer.
It got around. It's, it's, they're similar, very, I'm trying to think of something that's like $3,500.
What did the grant come for?
It was a Jag Ram.
I'd like the motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to second to approve the resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Dan Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Thank you. Number five, would be a ordinance waiting competitive bidding.
On this one, we have two, 2009 Chevy trucks that are $100,000 that were given to us by Marshall Service. We had two people on their task force with their mileage, we looked to trade them in and see who would give us the most money, and Tyler Ford would give us $12,100 or $250 apiece. So that would be $24,500 towards maybe 2018, this Ford, the couple of guys have now. So I'm asking you to wait for competitive bidding, so we can get this car that actually isn't on the state bid, but they didn't give us, they were already gonna give us the most money for the trade-in value, and there only be a $7,000 difference on what we have to pay.
Are you saying it's 2018 or 2017?
It's 2017, I'm sorry.
Black?
Yes.
Just all trading up, waving, trading in, waving, buying, culture. Okay. I like motion to approve the...
Say it.
You're gonna have to, it's an emergency clause, so...
All right.
It's one we still, we trade.
The Department of Marshals office, they're trading in on one car. Shouldn't we list all that in here, though, about what we're doing?
That's what we're covering on the second one, it didn't provide this money.
Second one's showing how you're gonna pay for the $7,000.
He's wanting, he's wanting to see the 12, 250 in this ordinance that we're getting traded for two vehicles for twice.
We're trading two trucks for a value of $12,250 each, for, to purchase a 2017 something that cost whatever. I mean, we may be getting $25,000, maybe spending $100 for that car, or the paper, you don't know what you're paying.
But this is just a, to wait competitive bidding, that's all it...
It says...
We're not buying anything, we're just waiting for...
Specific to the Ford Explorer SUV of the purchase.
So this, though, will satisfy what's the disposal of those two vehicles?
We can do that, and the resolution will probably be better. The next one, if you approve this.
Because that's just the way it is.
If you don't waive the competitive bidding, the next one's, you're all in.
And he wants to amend the next one, yes, this is approved, yeah, to add section that explains...
Old Daniel's saying that there's no language in there showing where the two trucks went and then out.
Says trade-in.
Well, I know what that mounts. Somebody, if somebody sat here two years from now and reads that, they're not gonna know anything by reading that.
Well, they're gonna look and the city...
It's better to cover in the resolution where we're moving the...
Okay. Yeah, but the steward's saying about the dollar amount of trade-ins, that 12,000...
These competitive bidding ordinance is usually done, including dollar amounts.
Daniel's just saying for the clarification where the money's going.
Should we go talk about checks, this?
Right. I'm just trying to help Daniel out with his language over here, just, something get confused.
You want to put it...
If y'all feel like...
Purchase one new Ford Explorer SUV for $7,000, whatever it is, is that what you want, to see?
Well, I would get your better, uh, our, better bidding, if you just put out there these specs.
Strike it up in the resolution, how about that?
Okay.
Like that, Danny?
Yeah. I still got a motion for this one.
Yes, like you did, you said to just...
There's a marchy clause on it.
I take a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance waiting competitive bidding, but I don't...
Second.
Put it on first reading, then all.
Put it on first reading.
Okay.
And we have motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, I need to read the top. An ordinance waiting competitive bidding for the participants, one new 2017 Ford, Ford Police Department, declaring emergency for other firms.
Second, third read.
Second.
Motion to second to wait, second, third read.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt you.
Motion to second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Dan?
I'd motion to enact the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion to second to enact the emergency clause.
Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Dan?
Thank you. Number six, I want a motion, resolution, and new funds.
Now, the funds, two spots, $3,500 from vehicle maintenance and $3,500 for fuel, to be moved over capital to pay that $7,000 balance, that's remaining from the trade-in value.
Gotcha. Now, where y'all want to slide in the...
We need a section two that explains what we're doing with the trade-in, and that way that it's from Marshall, Marshall. That's what they're wanting, so we need to add, get a section two.
So when you, when you...
Is that where I work at, Tom?
Agree on the general fund budget, that was coming up, general, is that sliced out here?
It comes out of his budget, but it's from those two line items that we're addressing, vehicle, fuel, and maintenance. But we can above that, drill up in the specifics about where the $7,000 came from, so at least out the details of the offer, which is why you enacted the emergency clause, and why you waived competitive bid, and then we'll put that in there, so anybody that picks up that resolution will know where the $7,000 came from, and where we're gonna find it.
After the whereas statement, I would just do what you just said.
Do I have the whereas?
Well, just somewhere I need to list where the $25,000 came from in the ballot, but...
Okay.
Now, we got to set up the price.
So it's gotta stick at whereas, and then explain what exactly?
The purchase price of the vehicle less the 2009 Chevy... Two 2009 Chevy trucks, which are traded in at a value of blah, 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 blah. And then, we've got a record that those two trucks and those bin numbers in the way that this new truck came in.
Probably better to make all that section one, than make this section two.
Section, I think those sections are operative, aren't they, max, and whereas and explanation of what we're doing? So indeed, that's the next one, whereas, it's not really operative.
You still have my bin numbers?
No, I give that step back. Do you want me to speak this? We use this to do the whereas thing. What's, is the table?
Unless, if you want, if you want.
I'll skip it, you can do it tomorrow.
Is that perfect?
Charlotte, can you revise that?
Yes, we'll revise it, um, with the information that Doc, that Johnson just gave me, with those numbers and the explanation for the trade-ins, and a second paragraph on the whereas. Section one, right? Right? Daniel?
Yes.
I'm taking...
We do not.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution with the changes as described, that will be made by this Charlotte.
Sophie?
Period. And motion?
Second.
No second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Dan?
Thank you. Number seven, planning department, rezoned.
All right, the first one is the rezon of a, on a four-twell seater, this was down the street from the Hall Homes, uh, I'm not sure what you, if you have in your, your packet, but the property owner came in and asked for a rezon, this one was from a car one, good car, too, for the purpose of building duplexes, and I don't know if you've got a copy of, of the duplexes or...
Thank you.
Opposed?
Is that what you were trying to give me today?
I think so, you wouldn't say it.
I gave the other one, on the even, the farther.
Uh, except, the only difference, come be, you don't go all brick.
Where is this?
This is on Seager Street, uh, if you're going west on Seager Street, past Hall Homes, there's an empty parcel there, then there's a home, and then another...
Seager is right by the ambulance service?
Uh, yeah, well, if you turn by the ambulance service.
Turn between Bush and...
Yeah. My son, Phil, just agreed to do all brick, he had siding on the side in the back, and we have to do all brick, and he said, he agreed to. Robert McGinn, he said, this is perfect, uh, new home in that area, this is 1968, you know what happened in 1968?
We all break. I make the motion to be adopted, ordinance?
Second.
Right, if you have an arms clause.
I make the motion to be adopted, this is the first bidding.
Not how long?
Not how long?
Oh.
Can you want to, we have a second, but somebody want to officially do that, second?
Sorry.
We have a notion, so the motion is the second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry? Dan? An ordinance pending ordinance number 17 dash 07, for the purpose of reselling certain properties, the city agreeing with any of them, it's only that, the city agreeing with the current emergency ordinance.
Make motion, right, second, third read.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Dan?
I second it.
Motion to second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Dan?
Second.
Motion second to enact the emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Three.
Uh, the second, the second one is, uh, basically the same thing, we want to rezon the parcel at four eleven Dogwood, which is just basically solid there. For the same type of duplex, uh, uh.
Same builder.
Same builder, same owner of the property, but, uh.
Will the all brick, will the all brick too?
Same, same one.
Okay.
Uh, Dogwood is here, the other one is Cedar Street, just to the north of that. And, um, like I said, same people on both, both properties. No bars or, or. We're gonna say. Uh, this one was kinda strange because it went back to when we started this, we looked at it and for some reason, another years ago, it was on C two. And so this is gonna go from C two to R two, so come correct the weird tone you to begin with and, uh, gonna put a nice, uh, duplex over that area. And also, on this one, again, the builders are real, uh, willing to work with in Dogwood, there's a huge magnolia tree, right in the corner of this property. So he's gonna skew the duplex over so he doesn't have to take out the magnolia tree. I love magnolia trees, especially in your yard and that thing. But, uh, it is a beautiful tree and he's, he's, uh, a great.
Make a motion, we adopt this ordinance, uh, per, per. Perfect.
Put it on per first reading by Powell.
There it goes. Uh, motion?
Second.
A second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
An ordinance pending ordinance number seventeen dash zero seven for the purpose of rezoning certain properties in the city of Greenwood, pending the official zoning map of the city of Greenwood declaring emergency for emergency.
Make motion, wait, second, third read.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Motion to enact the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion second to enact the emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown. Number nine, fire department.
Mayor of Council, I've done this a long time, you should have. I've had some research on, on the final resolution. Uh, basically, there were three resolutions, I've got funds over in trade that we're not using this year. We, we had, uh, so far, stuff all got.
Make a motion.
Full or canceled this summer, and then we had, uh, one of our conferences was canceled at the end of summer, so, uh, funds that I'd like to move over and use for maintenance repaired building. Uh, the majority of that, a big, large lot that costs is actually to buy a very entire suppression system. Here if I'm requiring everybody else, then maybe put one or two more station two. So, um, it's actually required for all living quarters, even though we don't have anybody living there yet. One is they, so I'd like to go ahead and have a pay forward, put in the, uh, it's basically a fire suppression system, build a little bit of stuff. And, uh, here I have a good time to do it, I'll bring the tour up.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Before we do that, I think this needs an operative word in there. Instead, it's in section one, it needs to say after maintenance repaired building, within the general fund, comma, fire department, comma, because it doesn't say that in there. And with that change?
Yeah.
Shall we do this?
Okay.
I'll review that second.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I'm on the department for, it's gonna be somebody talk to you when it's canceled.
Thank you. I'm Jan. Got to get a little bit of that. Uh, Mr. Terry, this is adoption number twenty eighteen calendar.
I like the table.
Wow. I didn't expect that.
Actually, on this, really, is it true?
I think so.
January eighth, it needs to say on that here first meeting, honestly, that's the first change I can see. We've already established that in the calendar last year.
So it's not the second.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'll be calling, I don't look like crap.
Make a motion, we adopt the, uh.
Second. Now wait a second. They said one of the Cowboys. December fourth will be a Monday again. Does it need years here coming up?
It'll be a Tuesday, December fourth.
Hey man, I beat some of them.
December fourth is a Tuesday.
Oh, you're saying it'll be the fourth because of.
Yeah, it'll be on Tuesday, on the day after the break.
Unless somebody called it off for weather.
Right, if it's not, then.
He's ignoring me.
Okay.
They're all.
I know. Make a motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number eleven. We, uh, we as in, uh, Ms. Tammy, myself, Charlotte, uh, and just, and Tom probably was looking at policies and just doing, they, they knew business, if you will, have noticed a few things that we need to address and we discussed a little bit of it this morning in our department meeting. So you have a resolution in front of you with a few, uh.
Four changes.
Four changes, yes, which I'm still looking to mine, so, the good things that we have noticed that we would like to amend our policies to take care of. Kind of clean some stuff up. Yes, that's it, thank you very much. I do, that's right, I was digging, I was digging underneath it for the, I think it's the roof here.
You have a permit for that?
Student, you have a permit for it?
These are products of problems and questions and non-clarifications that have popped up over the last year or so, I don't know.
Make a motion, we adopt this.
I'll second it.
Make a motion, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I believe that was the last item on our, that part of the agenda. Uh, we will go to department reports and questions for council. We've got, still got a few, chief, chief.
Talk about the roof then.
Is that a roof, a roof?
Mike was helping us out here on bidding the roofs from the field from the last month, we talked about having a special call meeting, uh, to have a bid, and that will be December fourteenth, six P M is when we advertise, so, um, so let Michael talk to you about that. Yeah, so Sturt was actually wanting to get the bid in and done before the end of the year, due to his funding, so we had a special meeting for that, so we did take and accept the bids on that date. Uh, get enough time to review them and get another contract before the end of the year. Uh, what we're looking to do is re-roofing the existing portion of the fire station that we didn't touch last time. Um, it's basically outdoor square footage, and we are, uh, gonna cover it with TPO roof and foam insulation. Um, replace that, be pulling the metal panels off, tie it back in, um, it's the same system we use on a lot of utility apartments, it's a retro fit system. Uh, it would have been ideal to take that metal roof off during the existing construction, uh, just didn't have enough funds at that time to add it to the project, so, uh, Sturt's, they call that, some of the maintenance funds for this year, so, uh, do you have any?
This is, you don't do gutter, right?
Uh, we're actually lining the existing gutter with TPO.
You know, that gutter is robbing out.
Yeah, we don't have a metal flashing, and the, and the, the TPO rubber material will be inside of, inside of that piece. We're dressing the drains. We're also tapering, we're also getting, really getting rid of the gutter, and we're taping and tapering everything to roof drains and then in the downspouts, all that'll be covered.
Are we expecting it to come in with our budgeted amount?
Yes.
Just TPO.
We actually, uh, it's a, it's a rubber, it's a rubberized roof material, I don't know the technical. Technical.
Not dry.
Paper over. And, uh.
Always try over like.
Yeah. We, uh, we also, uh, we're good, we're bidding two different kinds, we're building a sixty millimeter system, we're using mill system, and an eighty mill system. So you'll have your choice of the, the industry standard and then want to upgrade, if you want to take that upgrade, but, uh, I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of difference in the cost, but at least you'll have that availability to.
How many did we usually bid on something like this?
Uh, so far, we've had three bidders pick up the plans, so there could be more before today. We're having a walkthrough on Thursday, so anybody that shows up, I'm not changing the pick up plans after that, so they may want to come look at it first and decide if they want to do it.
Thermal plastic polyol.
Yeah.
What's the bid date?
Fourteenth. Fourteenth.
Thursday night. Does this add any work back into our bill?
Just coming Thursday.
When did you turn it in?
September.
Working six.
Oh, good, thanks.
Is there a working discussion?
So we need to send now, maybe council.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say is because it's, it's gonna be right at that, for that fifty thousand dollar threshold essentially, um, you know, if you wanted to waive that requirement for this particular project, that would be, fine, that's, that's your call. I mean, we're, you're hiring us to manage and open the bids, so, uh, and it's gonna be a public bid opening, so, I mean, the point of council setting there during the bid opening, to me, for us is irrelevant, I mean, you're the service witnesses, but so, I mean, you can waive the rock to have fewer witnesses there.
Only you can do much to accept the lowest or possible bidder though?
Would, yeah, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that at the time. It would be ideal, I'm just saying, as far as that open bids, because you're scheduling all these people, and I've had this conversation with you multiple times, you're scheduling all these people to be there, and you're asking them to be there at six o'clock, or after hours from their jobs, and then if the council doesn't show up to open bids, that really doesn't show how much respect for the people that did three weeks to get all their stuff together and do the bids together and participate in the process. So, um, it would be ideal if we get open bids, and if you don't have enough people there, just take them under advisement, and we could have a different special call meeting to accept the bids, if that was a requirement, hopefully you'll have enough people there.
Is it here?
First thing we do is get all the types of boards, and now they change that deal, Doug, and Doug can make the board if it. What role does? Hunt is no longer our local architect.
That's true. Anybody wanna know where your moves is?
It's gonna be a special call.
We have a water press.
Yeah, but by the way, two stations.
Twenty-nine oh three Lakeside Drive.
Lakeside.
Seventy-nine three six.
So, will it be a special call city council meeting then, and then it will just be our, like, our bid opening for, for riffing? What is brother Paul?
These are the pieces.
Time is, uh.
Reloading the trash.
Fire station one.
Travis still.
We're gonna deal with him from now on. How the truth espokes me, you shadow light which.
Okay, I'll show them.
Well, I guess, we talked about lowest bidder stuff, I mean, kind of, on the, in the parks thing, they were talking about an issue with, uh, relooking at something because of the lowest bid requirement.
Yeah, so on, uh, we, we did the trail work for the, uh, the extension of the lake trail, and they, uh, the low bidder was basically submitted an unqualified bid. Um, we turned the bid tabulation into the state, and the state took it to the federal level and sent us back a response that, uh, essentially that they want to take the low bid. We presented our case of why they're not qualified, so we're just in that argument with them of getting them to understand it's in your best interest and the city's best interest to take the second bidder in this case. The first, uh, bidder had some litigation issues with the city of Portsmouth, um, they submitted a bid for electrical and, uh, for unlicensed electrical on the bid tab, uh, they submitted a couple other errors on their bid tab. And then there's also just a past performance on a few other dollars that we worked with and several others that worked for, and it's not going to attend your best interest to proceed with them on this particular. And this is for your grant, this is for your recreational trails.
For the highway.
You also have to be a SAM, uh, I think initials are SAM, sir, I don't know exactly what it stands for, but you gotta have a preapproval from the federal government to bid the project.
You have SAM registration.
SAM registration, yeah. They're not coming out with this.
That's a problem that we commonly have, we need to start qualifying builders, bidders before they bid. You know, city of Portsmouth does it.
You can't do that on a state project, they actually don't even have to be a licensed contractor to bid this work. It's a totally different set of rules that we're going with because it's a federal grant.
So there's nothing we could do to qualify.
No, I could, I could have walked in and said, here's my bid for X amount of dollars, and if it's a low bid, you have to accept it, and then I have to require kind of time to go to the state and try to require a contractor's license. Um, so it's really a waste, the way I said, it's really a waste of everyone's time, I mean, it's not done in the traditional, uh, path that we use here in Arkansas, um, or the regular Arkansas law, so.
It's not that.
So you're saying because it's a state?
Because it's a federal grant, we have to follow the federal guidelines for bid submissions.
So the city council didn't need to see, you need to have any knowledge of these bids being let out or anything?
It was the parks commission.
Right.
Work out again.
Yeah, we sure appreciate that, so, whenever some litigation came back and they didn't take the lowest bidder, who's gonna be getting the heat?
Yeah, we've not accepted any of the bid yet, so nothing's happened, or currently the bids are still under advisement.
Right.
We don't state, so, as far as someone coming back, I mean, at this point, nothing is.
Where would they come back and do stuff to, if they had an issue with the city agreement?
If, if, if we said the second, the second bidder, they would, would eventually come back to say.
So again, we could put us position to have no knowledge whatsoever of any bid or any dollar value ever even taken place or any bid opening or any job or even any project bid.
Well, I think, no, I did watch.
Have no knowledge.
I'm not disagreeing.
No one on this panel knows anything about the bid opening you just told.
Their, their reports has been given multiple times, and we talked about the project, that's been going on for about two and a half years.
Right.
Uh, we're at the full stage, and that's dealing with the, uh, red tape that we have to go through to get it, so, I mean, I think awareness of the project, um, is not, I mean, we, we've been working out there for a long time on that particular project.
Well, I'm just.
I'm just, I like parks a lot, as parks are a brand, I mean, so you've heard Richard and, uh, Sinda come up here and report about the status of the work and.
And had been, and anything going for that much out there? It's kind of bogged down.
Yeah, well, we got, we had to bid the second portion because it wasn't work performed by the city, uh, and that's what we're waiting on.
Ultimately, any bid openings through the park commission, land commission, water commission, we don't have any say, no matter what we think about it. The council has a body, but we like the people, they're meaningless like you.
You've already approved any of that.
I think you approved their budget for the capitalist ventures on those particular projects, and they, they don't have to perform all the services for you, so you don't have to, so through that.
I'm reminding the city commission.
I'm ready to accept the lowest bidder, you know, the status you met back.
My old complaint is, and we've seen this before, unfortunately, this is playing, was that when you guys start suing people, guess who gets sued? The four, six fathers up here, and then, then we get the fire branch pole, why are there ten damn dollars to you because I don't have it, I don't, well, just clean out, like we always do, settle for three and a half.
Technically, you can read the law, there's a lot of layers along the way, so. I really.
This really, I started, we, we started. Well, he signed, he ultimately signed.
I do sign, yeah. Once they're, once they're open and.
I do sign, once they're, once they're open and for everybody's commissions or whoever.
Whoever, I love that.
You know.
In general, in general, where we're all bits.
Well, I just know who's going to be on the stairs when we get to see.
And again, knowing how bad it's going to be, all of the bids that we're talking about are public to bid, so there's advertisements that are in the newspapers for two consecutive weeks. I have a project for like four years, I mean, so we're, maybe might not look at it, but that information is out there for whoever we gather and have on hand, I would understand.
What's your address?
Point nine three Lakeside.
That's what I'm. I'll drive.
Thank you, Mr. Vizjol.
Jack, a late party.
Again, department heads report, do you want to hear from any other department head? You got Mr. Wiley back there, I think, still awake, I think.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to go over some of the commercial guidelines, so.
The commercial guidelines, I gave that to the planning commission, back to the planning commission, like we talked about last month, they've got it in their hands, they'll bring it back to me at the next planning commission meeting, then I'll bring it back to you, you guys.
When's the next planning commission meeting?
Third Monday of every month.
So, so would that mean that it'll be coming back to us in January for the general meeting or?
Yes.
So we can put that on the agenda for the third reason.
Okay, it just, I said last time, we'll put it back on there, so I'll bring it forward. So I'll put it on there.
And then, how are we proposing a budget for this year? I'm sorry, how are we coming up with a budget for this year? The budget is, I believe department heads, as of this morning, everybody has gotten with you, Tom, is that correct?
Yes, I have everybody's budget and I'm rolling into the general. Water wastewater is pretty much done, the commissions already proved it, we're ready to actually do a session if you guys have to present it. Parks is meeting for their second round, it's Thursday, and they should finalize, they're just looking at council right now. As far as the general, or the general, planning has got theirs to me, fire has theirs to me, parks, that's the other one that will be done, police is working on theirs, it should happen this week. And street, and that's pretty much it. I'm ready to actually sit down and start the ball rolling, whatever your pleasure is on who you want to meet with first and how you want to structure your planning, budget sessions.
We just talked a little bit about that this morning, this council wants to do what we've done in the past, is then have two departments possibly at a time come in.
Water wastewater would like to be.
Yeah, that would make most sense. Should get water, wastewater out of the way. They actually asked me to ask you that.
So if we could set some dates tonight, that'd be really good.
Do you have a reason why?
So what date would you generally like to be? And I think Mr. Wiley has mentioned, talked to Sue a couple of times, just to size.
I mean, as you want to have.
Before we hear that, water, water Charlie suggested that we might add one more with water wastewater because we have it. So did anybody else request? Does it get up here?
Well, who uses water?
Fire uses water.
Could we do water and wastewater on the fourteenth and we got to be here anyway for the bid opening?
That was at six o'clock for the windmill street. So we're going to follow the bill.
Immediately following, so six thirty or just immediately following, whatever that is.
Unfortunately, I won't be here that night. I've got some basketball and water in the, two different areas. You want to add street to this?
You'll be ready?
You're in it definitely.
A little pressure. Water. Water wastewater street.
On fourteen.
At six thirty?
We'll be following, yeah.
We don't think we're safe, so we can follow it away, we've got six thirty, hold it.
You want to then waste our planning and then lastly do parks general? And then that will fuck more.
Police fire and planning together.
Yeah, and another one than the last session, we had to be parks in general, does that sound good? Parks have a lot to it.
So that wind was that police fire and plan the next meeting?
We'll set that date.
And that would just be three sessions.
Sure.
Yeah, but we're going to discuss the next AP meeting next Tuesday.
Kind of get there.
I'm still.
With the general.
Oh, yeah, definitely, at the end, at the end, it's just a small.
Parks general, the biggest thing is that we. Guilt for this.
Yes, and that goes.
A percentage guilt to parks.
Right, at that.
That's what there's something there.
They're looking at a percentage of their income going to parks, just allocating it right to parks every year.
It's their market.
Forty or fifty percent of them. They already asked for that much anyway, and get it every year, but they're, that's what we need to do.
Basically saying what they've been asking for anyway, it was the same, okay, this is your.
The, well, I say in the free confest, you know, you've done that, AP committed a person that.
Yeah.
Huh?
It's thirty grand.
Okay, that's my thought, okay. As long as the, yes, it's first and then you.
I think that would actually be part of that.
It is part, it will be part of that.
And they.
It's just, they're just going to combine what they, what they ask for anyway in parks and just get on the top and not collate enough fish.
The money that goes to those activities goes to parks.
Would still be separated once it gets parked.
Still just talking about making it easier on our equation by just going again and sending all the parks, so they can stop having to come to AP when we request it. It seems like, it seems like, no, the park with this, the city shouldn't have to do that. Right, so we're actually just trying to streamline and make it a little easier. But I can understand, I can understand some other agency or something has to come asked, but within the city nation, I mean. It just, it just eliminate the monthly parks, park standing after asking for. Which they shouldn't have to. Right. That's what's going to be. So that would, so what we got to do is going to bring it, AP's going to have to bring it up and then have, you know, approve the budget, prove the expenditure.
We just got to approve the budget for the AP commission and spend it there, please. According to that, or according to the government, yes.
Right, we're bringing it up to the money that's going to the parks.
But I just give them that though, I mean, AP is just a, even though it's not, I guess, really city money, I would still kind of like to somehow have a AP report going with other reports, just so I know what's going on with it.
I like it, my fault, my.
Your fault, my.
Yeah, what do you want out?
Well, I just think, you know, there's a lot of things that transpire over there, you know, everything carried, like commission me.
Let me see, that's generated, but I mean, you have that information and, yeah. A month, a report.
Oh, you have to do that to your warrant that's down there, right? Just paid the AP, is it in there? It's already in there, isn't it? Yeah, it's in there, in that report to your left.
To the left of it?
It's not grants, but it's about in and out.
And that does have a little while, I guess, and didn't that, you know, it's kind of like what grants were awarded.
That's in the minutes and they're online.
Okay.
I guess if you have any questions, I'm available. We did not shadow like having a party.
As in a house warming party?
We did not have that.
We can get in that. Okay. So any other thoughts or indoor questions or concerns with the department heads?
I guess one more, I know you're concerned, I heard that your sister had a drum off.
Yes, she had a hernia soreness and not really your typical thing, but she, long story short, Tommy, my brother-in-law took her to the hospital about three o'clock in the morning and they did some tests and nothing, nothing really showed up. And it was kind of suggested to her that she come coming home, but one, one particular doctor, I guess, said, you know, if I was you, I might stick around a while and just let's do something else tomorrow. So she stayed the night, bit of heart cath, she had ninety percent blockage in her making artery, mentally, quote unquote, wouldn't make her, so. Very fortunate that they found it and put a stent in it. And she got, she's on, came home today. I felt very bad for her, as brothers do, so I got her a really nice card, it was just in generic, welcome to Greenwood card, and marked out a few words and made it, it went well. And then taped three coffees to stir, sticks in there as three extra stents in case they need it. And so we had everybody's time, but she's thanks for asking, she's done much better than thank you for that and hopefully, and of course, she's now on park vacation and stuff, so. But the good news is she has heart, that we found. Continue to joke and I'm glad I'm here, she's in good shape, so, sir.
I like the mayor.
I like, yes, I like the mayor, that's right, but thank you for asking. Uh, council forum? Yes, unfortunately, we're wearing hats and one of my hats is the president of the basketball booster club. And so I'm here again to ask the city if they would like to work the session stand again. I think it's time. Now, we'll be on the outside today, if you get in earlier this time. That would be good, because that didn't go well. I know. Anyway, I had a meeting in school at six o'clock before I got here from that, and so I thought I would ask.
One day.
Well, there's five dates that are open right now. January second is a Tuesday, January fifth is a Friday, January nineteenth is a Friday, February the second is a Friday, and February fifteenth is actually a Thursday. Which I'm assuming the medical trip or something, why it's all Thursday or something, anyway. Can we look at all days and get back with it? Please, if you're grabbing on me, I thought I. I think Simon, you got a opinion? Yeah.
Sign it up.
We'll do. We ate many nights or did we? Right.
Three months.
If you find something out, ASAP, because I have another lady that's asking banks, she'll be going tomorrow, has the banks, we normally ask all four banks.
Is it four?
Best.
Four people, yeah.
But my, me and my spouse down for the nineteenth, January nineteenth.
She's speaking for the city, nineteenth of January? I'll put the city down for the nineteenth and then regular, even before Friday. I'll bring my spouse sunny.
I'm really worried, really.
Yeah, you'll have to go to Portsmouth to get it.
Thank you. We might even come up with another one tomorrow, we know, but we'll take that one for sure. Hey, anything else from the council?
I'm assuming that. We've been there probably, we'll make it back tomorrow. I talked to Dave, she said they're having the next meeting.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So they can. I could worry to bring out and talk to him.
You'll be put it on the agenda or?
Yes.
They're listed on the, I had a contact with the mayor and I told some of them that he was with the mayor and the mayor.
I had a good visit with Tom and Doug about part of the district. So he's available to answer all questions that you have.
Yep, and Tom is going to send him information, he asked, I talked to him a little bit, some specifics about what they're going to have and what we're going to now, I didn't talk about it, Tom's going to send him information regarding sales tax revenue, because obviously, mom, based on that, he'll pay back, so he's going to send information of what we do now. And so he can have some idea, he's also going to bring a gentleman, I believe, if I understand him right, from the USDA, in case we're interested in that grant money, forty years or anything type of situation. We'll get some good part facts from him. And if they charge, account my, because they're my lawyer, and they think they've been charged, if they did, we'll just take that part.
They should be charged, you never had it before.
With all the businesses?
I'll wager the total.
Nice treatment and well, so. Okay, uh, anything else from council? Yes, sir.
This year, the Arkansas municipal league is having a winter conference in Portsmouth and.
We've got a whole floor, Brandon.
Well, I was just hoping after your floor and party that we could maybe try to fill up the table at the opening bank.
That'd be great, being around here.
And even, that should be after your birthday bash, I mean, before your birthday bash.
What's that date?
Well, it's, when it's eleventh and twelfth. Your birthday bash? Yeah, but the opening banquet's on Wednesday night.
Isn't that?
Oh, it is? Like I said. Is that the night?
It's eleventh.
He would want to be there on Thursday.
Well, we're just, I think, it makes suggestions since it's in Portsmouth.
This is the first time since I've been involved. If it's Wednesday, I'm. Because how do we go? So this is the first time in thirty years, which is in Portsmouth, it would be nice if we could represent ourselves on Wednesday night, just to the table. I don't want to push all the good classes or anything, but at least if we could just show up for the opening banquet.
See, if you would sign us up, I'm going to do.
I think you can just show up for that, you've got to sign up for the.
That's okay.
You guys do that.
On the tent.
They actually do that.
We have to do the tent.
They actually do have it for the security these days.
Okay, so it's Wednesday the tenth, so we're definitely going to need a head count because we're going to have to register for the.
We're already registered, yeah.
If you'll just call me, I'll register you if you want to, if you want to go.
Do you have myself an AC register, because we always go, right?
I don't have any registered, that hasn't hurt for me, but I will now.
This is why we always hit the dumpy room over in North Little.
Because you don't ever tell me.
Your logic will be your house time. Your house will be the room.
Now, y'all are staying in the penthouse suite.
Exactly.
They're over there, they're renting the room.
But you don't ever tell me until the day before you want to go.
We, I would say, that's not really the reasoning.
Me and I see her, so Hanksey and I are going, but we, of course, we don't need any rooms. That's the beauty of it. The expenses aren't bad.
I don't need a room either.
You don't need a room?
I don't know, I hate to, I hate to, I hate to spend money on a whole weekend, but I can't go to the classes, I can't get out of work.
That way you get a new state statute book and everything.
I don't think I can miss.
I could do Wednesday, but I can't.
But I could go on a night, what's the?
But I could, all I'm asking.
You have to be signed up.
I'll sign the Wednesday, I don't like the plan.
Okay, now, what's in the bag? What's the cost of it? For you? I don't want to spend a hundred and seventy-five dollars to see if like one Wednesday I make, I can't go to the third day price.
You do get.
I'll let you, I'll let you know.
We do get the new legal book.
Yeah, that one.
Grounds you can get if he does. Hundred dollar blue.
Yeah. So we're good?
So.
I'll leave it. Did you get Lang?
Mine.
Mine is, mine is in North Little.
Oh.
He may need a room.
Get in one of those hourly rentals, like you did in I C.
I got to email the.
But y'all in an hourly rental. I can't next time, I will next time.
Just call ninety-five an hour, if you ask us how many hours a morning.
Okay? I'll remember that. They, they ask you to be looking for the hour.
We're in the big white, we're in the big white house, I mean, with all the marble floor.
They're in the.
They're in the dream, in the capital street.
They're capital.
My room is as big as this, my bedroom is.
You really want?
I looked around, I thought there was, there was another, I kept expecting another creep to show up in my room, it was just, it was just crazy. Alright, that's enough. Council, do you have anything else? Nope, if not, I think it's there.
Oh, just a little nugget to go along with the, it being held in Portsmouth tomorrow and. Well, just a little nugget that goes along with the, it being held in Portsmouth tomorrow and Thursday, International, uh, Society of Clerks are holding, it's the first time that I know I've ever, uh, conference, a district conference in Portsmouth. City Clerk of North Little Rock and Portsmouth, and I am helping with that, and it's really neat that Portsmouth is attracting that. Yeah, tomorrow, Thursday, a little bit probably, so I'll be going, I'll be there. Yeah, if you want to do something.
Statewide Pride presents the support of the city of Greenwood for their efforts in community safety and crime prevention, second safest city in the state. Greenrider, I don't know what's wrong with us, we can't catch up with Greenrider, but that's obviously a great thing, too, appreciate what you guys do for us. Fundraiser, uh, asked to mention this for the fish, it's a fish fry bingo night, I don't know if you got this in your pocket. Uh, that'd be fun for the whole family, all proceeds go to Greenwood Senior Center, Saturday, January thirteenth, dinner at four thirty, because that's when that seniors eat. Uh, bingo after dinner, which I'm not sure you're legal, uh, tickets are ten dollars a person, each ticket will buy you a, uh, okay, each ticket gets you a fish dinner with all the pizzas, dessert, drink, and two bingo cards, kids' plates are five dollars, so that's a good cause, over at the senior center.
If you've never been to Greenrider, it's a town a little bit smaller than ours, and they have an unbelievably bad traffic problem, which is kind of north and a little bit east of Conway, and they're, well, they're humongously four-lane, right through the middle of town with a turn lane, and it's bumper to bumper. Just so you know, four-lane, it's obvious.
Does not, does not fix it, and on that note, I have not gotten anything back officially from the highway department since we were told by Mr., uh, Director, coming, Scott Bennett, that we were, we were being studied again. We noticed a few weeks ago, some very odd-looking camera-looking things attached to several poles around town with some counters, I don't know if that was highway department, did you ever find out? Don't know if it was, and then I've heard that there was another one out here on the highway, so we're hoping that there actually is a new, and I, first, I'm not saying Mr. Bennett put us astray, I firmly believe that we are being studied again, so. I want to try to contact them, uh, next day or two, Mr. Adams, maybe for Chad, and see what he knows and get, I'd like to get a confirmation, absolutely, that they're looking, I know what you're doing, you're staring at me, I feel you, we, uh.
Larry, uh, uh, what's the name, Sam, with the F B O?
Yes.
He, he says that he has seen the study.
Okay, good, so it's really happening?
All sounds.
All sounds, okay, and so, anyway, we know we're being studied, so that's good, we're being watched. Uh, anything else? Thank you again for a great meeting, I think that we did a lot of stuff in the time that we've been here, I know it's been a long time, uh, somebody wake up Tanya and tell her that she can go in a little bit. I'd be most, you're there.
Second.
We had most a second.